The Royal Commission on Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning to everybody who is following these proceedings. This is a one-day hearing that forms part of Public Hearing 14 of the Royal Commission. The first five days of Public Hearing 14 took place in Adelaide from the 7th to the 11th of June 2021. The subject of that hearing was preventing and responding to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation in disability services in South Australia. Before commencing today, I wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, on whose lands Commissioner Alistair McEwan AM and I are sitting, and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I also acknowledge the Nanu Woll people on whose lands Commissioner Barbara Bennett PSM is participating in the hearing. We also pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. And I extend our respects to all First Nations people who may be following these proceedings. The purpose of today's hearing is to allow council assisting the Royal Commission and the parties given leave to appear at Public Hearing 14, the opportunity to present oral submissions in support of their respective written submissions. Council assisting the Royal Commission filed written submissions on the 6th of August 2021. They invite the commissioners to make certain findings in the two case studies that were the subject of detailed evidence at the hearing. The written submissions further contend that it is open to commissioners to make recommendations concerning responses by the South Australian Department of Human Services to the circumstances of each case study. Council assisting submissions also address the lessons to be learned from two important reports into the tragic death of Ms Anne Marie Smith that occurred on the 6th of April 2020. The first report is that of the Safeguarding Task Force, in fact, there are several reports, established by the South Australian Minister for Human Services. The second report was prepared by the Honourable Alan Robertson SC at the request of the NDIS Quality and Safeguard Commission. The State of South Australia filed written submissions on the 10th of September 2021 in response to evidence given during Public Hearing 14. South Australia's submissions accept some matters advanced by council assisting, but dispute that the commissioners should make findings adverse to the interests of South Australia. The Australian Government also filed written submissions on 10th September in response to council assisting submissions. The Australian Government notes that council assisting does not seek specific findings or propose recommendations about the functions, powers and policies of the NDIS Commission or the National Disability Insurance Agency. Victorian James, the pseudonyms are credited to the parents of Mitchell, filed submissions on 17th September 2021. Victoria and James agree with the key themes and findings outlined in council assisting submissions, but propose that certain additional findings should be made adverse to the interests of South Australia. A note has also been received from the South Australian Public Advocate and Principal Community Visitor clarifying certain matters referred to in council assisting submissions. All of these submissions are published on the Royal Commission's website. There is also a response from Mrs Karen Rogers, and I understand that senior council will make reference to that in due course. As I have indicated, the three commissioners participating in this hearing are Commissioner Bennett, who is in Canberra, Commissioner McEwan, who is in Sydney, and myself, I am also in Sydney, but in a different room than Commissioner McEwan. And I will now take the appearances today.
Thank you, the commission pleases. I'm Kate Eastman, I'm Senior Counselor assisting the Royal Commission, and I appear with Miss Elizabeth Bennett and Dr Hayley Bennett.
Thank you, Ms Eastman. Can I take other appearances, please, perhaps starting with the Commonwealth of Australia? Is there an appearance? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Dighton, appearing for the Commonwealth instructed by Gilbert and Tobin.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Dighton. The State of South Australia? Is there an appearance for the State of South Australia? Yes.
Yes, sorry Chair, we had difficulties with the video there. Matt, please, the commission, my name is Simpson and I appear for the State of South Australia.
Thank you very much, Mr Simpson. Is there a representative for Victoria and James?
Yes, good morning Commissioners, O'Brien for Victoria and James.
Thank you very much, Mr O'Brien. Are there any other appearances to be announced? If not, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. As council assisting, we also acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians on the lands on which we meet today. We acknowledge the First Nations elders, past, present and emerging, and we also acknowledge and pay our respects to all First Nations people following proceeding today. Commissioners, from the 7th to the 11th of June last, earlier this year, you held a public hearing in Adelaide, Public Hearing 14. The hearing was one in a series of public hearings that will examine systemic issues concerning the manner in which disability services can or should prevent violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability. Public Hearing 14 had two parts. The first part examined the experiences of Mitchell and then Daniel Rogers. They both received disability accommodation services and support services provided by the South Australian Department of Human Services, DHS. The second part of the hearing examined the responses of the South Australian and Australian governments respectively to the inquiries following the death of Anne Marie Smith on the 6th of April 2020. Ms Smith was a South Australian resident and an NDIS participant. In the years leading up to Ms Smith's death, she lived by herself in her own home. She had a sole carer who was employed by a registered service provider. She died on 6th April 2020 in what has been described as appalling circumstances, after a substantial period of neglect and having lived in squalid circumstances. Ms Smith's death shocked the community and prompted a review into the safeguarding of people with disability. There were two inquiries established, one by the South Australian government and one commissioned by the NDIS Quality and Safeguard Commission. In relation to Ms Anne Marie Smith, the Royal Commission's terms of reference expressly direct the commissioners to ensure that evidence that may be received that identifies particular individuals having been the subject of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation is dealt with in a way that does not prejudice current or future criminal or civil proceedings or other contemporaneous inquiries. Media reports have revealed, following the public hearing in Adelaide in June, that on the 28th of July this year, Ms Smith's carer pleaded guilty to a charge of manslaughter. The criminal proceedings are ongoing. So nothing in these submissions today is intended to be a comment on or in any way touching on the ongoing criminal proceedings with respect to Ms Smith. As the Chair mentioned, following Public Hearing 14 in June, we prepared council assisting submissions. Those are submissions in writing, and council assisting has an obligation at the conclusion of evidence presented at a public hearing to provide notice by way of closing submissions of issues upon which adverse findings may be made by the Royal Commissioners. The purpose of the written submissions was to address the evidence and propose findings and recommendations that may be open to you commissioners. It's important to note that our proposals and our suggested findings do not represent the commissioners' views or findings that will be made. Commissioners, you have also received written submissions from the parties who participated in the hearing, and today is an opportunity and an important opportunity for you to hear from the other parties. Chair, as you said, all of the written submissions are now available on the Royal Commission's website. So for the purpose of this hearing, I don't propose to read out our written submissions, but I want to cover some of the matters raised from the evidence that you heard in June. But before turning to this task, can I outline how we'll proceed today? I'll present the council assisting submissions, and I'm keeping an eye on the time in front of me, and we'll break shortly after 11am for morning tea. I suspect I may be still going by then, and so I'll try to complete the oral submissions after morning tea. Ms Karen Rogers was not represented at the hearing, and she's provided you with some written submissions, but she'd also like an opportunity to address you personally today. So Commissioners, I hope that you'll grant Mrs Rogers the opportunity to have leave to present a short oral submission. When Mrs Rogers has finished her statement, Mr O'Brien will present the submissions for Victoria and James. And you'll recall that Victoria and James are the aunt and uncle of Mitchell. Then we'll break for lunch. And Commissioners, it may be that the representative for the Commonwealth or the Australian Government would wish to make some short submissions or you may have some questions of him. That will then be followed by the opportunity for South Australia, through Mr Simpson, to make such submissions as he wishes to make, and then we'll close. I can't tell you precisely when we'll finish today, but I hope that we'll make reasonable time. So Commissioners, turning to our submissions. In our submissions, we sought to set out the key factual matters and identify themes that emerged from the evidence. The totality of the evidence enabled us to identify the following themes: the concept of vulnerability and risk; what a person-centred approach to service delivery means; communication; the quality of services; safeguarding systems; concept of provider of last resort; the importance of independent reviews; and we touched very briefly on some issues about the respective responsibilities of South Australia versus the Commonwealth. These matters are outlined in our written submissions, so I'm not proposing to take you through each of these areas separately. But what I thought I might do is identify the eight overarching findings that we've set out in our written submissions and address the seven recommendations with respect to South Australia. Those are matters that arise in relation to the case studies of Mitchell and Daniel Rogers. Now, while we did not seek any specific findings or propose recommendations about the functions or powers of the National Disability Insurance Scheme or the NDIS Quality and Safeguard Commission or the National Disability Insurance Agency, we did identify some key themes in relation to areas that might be of further work for the Royal Commission. Commissioners, you have ongoing work in relation to the provision of services by disability support services and ongoing issues in terms of regulation around those services. But because the Australian Government has provided some of the helpful submissions, I want to touch on what we identified as three key issues arising out of the two reports. So Commissioners, can I start, please, with the findings and recommendations concerning Mitchell and matters touching on the interests of Victoria and James? Commissioners, you'll recall Mitchell was 38 years old at the time of the hearing. He has autism spectrum disorder and he lives with an intellectual disability. You heard that over the years, he's also received a diagnosis of anxiety, bipolar disorder and possibly post-traumatic stress disorder. You heard accounts of Mitchell's early life and you heard that his needs have been significant. In his teenage years, his family felt that they couldn't provide him the level of care that he needed. And by the time he was 18 years old, Mitchell had lived in three disability residential services. In 2000, when he was 18 years old, he moved to the Strathmont Centre and he lived at the Strathmont Centre until 2016. Now, with respect to the Strathmont Centre, you will recall Mr Richard Brueggemann's evidence. He served as the Chief Executive Officer of the Intellectual Disability Services Council from 1982 to 2006, and he was the senior practitioner from 2003 until 2018. He told you something about the history of disability services in South Australia. He told you that in March 1971, the Strathmont Centre opened at Oakden. The South Australian Government provided accommodation and training of people, two people with intellectual disabilities, including children and young people. Mr Brueggemann said that the model was already outdated by the time of construction of the Strathmont Centre, and he noted the trend in Europe and elsewhere was to move to smaller accommodation units. Prior to the decommissioning of the Strathmont Centre in 2016, Victoria and James worked with the accommodation manager at the centre to find suitable accommodation in the Adelaide suburbs for Mitchell. By December 2016, Mitchell had moved into a unit among a newly built cluster of units that were operated by DHS. And you'll recall the accommodation was referred to as the residence of the public hearing. Mitchell had a one-bedroom unit with open plan dining and living area. And the evidence was that this was intended to be a short-term stay of about six months. However, by May 2021, Mitchell continued to live at the residence, and we now understand that Mitchell has relocated to new accommodation. You heard from Victoria and James, and they described their concerns about the quality and safety of the support services and accommodation provided to Mitchell from 2017 to early 2018. We've set these matters out in our written submissions, and I understand Mr O'Brien might touch on some of the issues. But I want to go directly to a matter of particular concern that founds the proposed findings that we've made. Commissioners, you will recall that on the 3rd of March 2018, Victoria and James received a letter at their home address. The letter became an exhibit in the proceeding. The letter threatened violence and abuse towards Mitchell. There was no author to the letter, but the letter, which was reproduced in our written submissions at page 16, made it clear that the author of the letter had turned his or her mind to ways in which Mitchell would now be at risk. The letter said this: food... dot 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 poison; medication... dot 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 wrong; shampoo... what's in the bottle? Acid? Question mark; bruises? How did that happen? Other clients with violent behaviour, e.g. dumbbells; going out... dot 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 falling downstairs; how well does he swim? Locked up; food withheld; going through the windscreen; seatbelt unclipped. And it concludes saying this: this little piglet is going to be abused with cruelty violence regularly and repeatedly. The author was not and has never been identified. At the hearing, Ms Muriel Kirkby said, and you'll recall she was the Director of Accommodation Services, that this letter was, quote, "completely heartbreaking to even think that anyone would write such a letter about anyone, particularly a vulnerable person." Commissioners, our first finding, number one, which is set out in our written submissions, is a finding where we contend that the DHS failed to carry out an appropriate investigation into the three March letter in March 2018 or at all. And then we identify six specific reasons to support that finding. Victoria and James support this finding in its entirety. In their written submissions, though, they propose two additional findings, and I expect Mr O'Brien will address the additional findings when he presents Victoria and James's submission shortly. In its written submissions, South Australia accepts that following the initial disclosure of the letter, DHS did not undertake a discreet and targeted investigation to determine the author of the anonymous letter. Ms Lois Boswell, who you'll recall gave evidence towards the end of the hearing. Not sure whether that was a signal for me, Chair, or not.
Not sure who it was directing.
Except, Ms Boswell accepted that there was not a thorough investigation and that steps that had been taken, she agreed, she did not think were sufficient. South Australia in its submissions says that its response to the letter was the immediate measures to ensure Mitchell's safety and to address other matters raised by James and Victoria in line with James's requests. The submissions say that South Australia accepts that DHS had a responsibility to attempt to identify the author of the letter irrespective of the wishes of the family, and asserts that it did so, at the same time accepting that the investigations were not as thorough in respect to this issue as they ought to have been. Our reading of South Australia's submissions is that South Australia accepts that a gap existed in its policies for the management of the incident, and there was no identified or suspected author. But as we read the submissions, South Australia does not accept that this represents a systemic defect. In our respectful submission, the issue that we sought to identify in this overarching finding, was there was a lack of clear guidance or protocols for responding to a threat, particularly such a serious threat. This is a threat that could have actually eventuated, and in that context may be viewed as indicative of a systemic defeat. Because no known or suspected perpetrator had been identified, it was important that the threat be properly and comprehensively addressed. So looking at the component parts, and I understand, Commissioners, that the relevant extracts from the findings will come up in a moment. Finding 1A.
Is your reference made?
So Commissioners, all of the findings, and for people following the proceedings, all of the findings are set out in a summary form at page 83 of the written submissions. And I think that finding's now coming up. So South Australia has...
Could we please bring up paragraph 323 of council assisting submissions, which contains the proposed finding number one? There we are. That's now come up. Ms Eastman, thank you.
Thank you. So you'll see this finding is directed to the following: that DHS did not take the three March letter seriously enough on 3 March 2018 and in the immediate days that followed. DHS acknowledged that the first investigation into the three March letter became distracted from the aim of finding the source of the threats against Mitchell. Now, South Australia disputes this proposed finding, and at paragraph five of its written submissions, it says that the actions of DHS on the days immediately following the receipt of the three March letter demonstrated that the department took the letter seriously. And in its submissions, it sets out particular actions taken by DHS staff that demonstrated a genuine concern for the welfare of Mitchell and a commitment to taking all reasonable steps to ensuring Mitchell's safety and to reassure his family. However, Commissioners, it is not our submission that DHS failed to take the letter seriously. Our contention is that DHS did not take the letter seriously enough on the day or in the immediate days that followed with respect to the context of the investigation. So in response to South Australia's contention, we submit that finding 1A is centred around the primary contention that there was no appropriate investigation at that point in time or in the days immediately after. A key part of that reason for not having an appropriate investigation in our submission is that the relevant officers in the DHS did not take the threat seriously enough to elevate it to an immediate investigation. We note the evidence presented at the hearing, particularly Ms Boswell's evidence. She accepted that the letter contained a serious threat to Mitchell's life. She said, quote, "that it was appalling and needed investigation." So the proposed finding in 1A is very much directed to whether or not the letter was taken and given sufficient serious attention to warrant an immediate investigation. That investigation is not in lieu of or instead of the support provided to Mitchell and the concerns for his welfare and the reassurance that DHS says it sought to provide the family. In our submission, while South Australia accepts its failure to undertake a proper investigation overall, there's really no explanation as to why it failed to do so on or in the immediate days following the 3rd of March. And it's in our respectful submission that the finding proposed in 1A should be accepted. The second component to finding 1 is paragraph 1B, and I'll ask if that come up. So you can see the approach that we've taken to the findings is to step through the events from the 3rd of March and following. So 1B is the failure to treat the three March letter seriously at this point in time had significant consequences for the manner in which the matter was handled by DHS throughout 2018 and 2019. Again, the South Australian submissions at paragraph 15 contend that the premise of this finding should not be accepted, and again repeat that the letter was taken seriously. It also suggests in its written submissions that this proposed finding is ambiguous in its terms because we have not identified the significant consequences and what specific matter was being addressed. We would be assisted when Mr Simpson gives his oral submissions to perhaps explain this context. If the concern arises because finding 1B has been taken in isolation from the totality of findings in paragraph 1, we regret that that has been the approach taken. However, in our submission, we say that the context is patently clear. The proposed finding that DHS failed to take the three March letter sufficiently seriously The proposed finding that DHS failed to take the three March letter sufficiently seriously is immediately preceded in our written submissions at paragraph sixty-eight where we say this: "On or around ten March 2018, the Director of Accommodation Services spoke with some managers and supervisors from the residents to see if they suspected anyone of being the author of the three March letter. This was not a formal, methodical investigation. No records were retained and no investigation report was produced." So seven days after the letter, on the tenth of March, what might be scoped as a start of an investigation was nothing more than a chat with various managers and supervisors. The fact that none of this was documented has to be a matter of some significance, creating consequences, and indeed significant consequences, for the way in which the matter was then handled throughout 2018 and 2019. In our submission, the lack of a contemporaneous record of the recollections is significant. The lack of examining any records of the movements of staff or data that could have been recorded or cross-checked at that time is significant. The collection of reliable and helpful material to inform an investigation on or closely around the third of March could have made a difference. And in that respect, we say that the finding that the lack of investigation and a lack of taking the letter seriously on the third of March is what causes the significant consequences that see their way through 2018 and 2019, and Commissioners, you may well say even through to the hearing in June this year.
Ms. Eastman, the reference in proposed adverse finding one B to the failure to treat the third March letter seriously, I take it from what you have said, that should be read seriously enough in the sense used with that proposed adverse finding one A.
Yes. Next is finding one C, and the conclusion is to describe the first investigation as seriously deficient. Now, South Australia acknowledges and accepts that the focus of investigators on other matters other than identifying the author of the three March letter was detrimental to identifying the author of the letter. That's a paragraph seventeen to nineteen of its written submissions. However, it contends this. It says that there's no certainty that the author of the letter would have been identified whenever the investigation had been commenced. And in paragraph nineteen, South Australia says that while the first investigation was deficient in terms of identifying the author, the first investigation could not be described collectively as seriously deficient. It raises the question of what was the purpose of the first investigation if not to identify the author of the letter? In our submission, it appears, looking closely at the South Australian submissions, that DHS accepts that the investigation was unjustifiably delayed and that it did not constitute a full or thorough investigation aimed at identifying the author of the letter. In its submission, it says it accepts this, and I quote: "The focus of investigators on matters other than identifying the author of the three March letter was detrimental to identifying the author of the letter." Now, notwithstanding this concession, South Australia still resists the adverse findings in the form described in paragraph one C. If it is the case that South Australia contends that there could have never been any certainty, regardless of when an investigation started or the manner of the investigation, to identify the author of the letter, that is a matter of some concern. My turn to proposed finding one D. The reference here to the second investigation is an investigation that occurred following findings or preliminary findings of the South Australian Ombudsman. Commissioners, you'll recall that in April 2019, an Ombudsman investigation commenced, and the Ombudsman later expressed preliminary opinion that the first investigation was not adequate, and the Ombudsman recommended that there be a further investigation. Finding one D is referable to the second investigation, and the proposed finding is that it had deficiencies in methodology, analysis, and the scope of information reviewed, such that it was neither sufficient, proper, nor competent. South Australia says in its submissions, paragraph twenty, that the scope of the second investigation was clearly directed to the identification of the author of the anonymous letter. At paragraph twenty-five, South Australia contends that while circumstantial evidence indicates that the author of the letter may have been a person who was at some stage an employee of DHS, the totality of the evidence does not permit a finding that this was necessarily the case. In our respectful submission, DHS in its submissions, and I'm using DHS and South Australia interchangeably for present purposes, does not explain why it makes this submission. If DHS proceeded on the basis that the author of the three March letter was someone outside the DHS system, that is not recorded in any of the investigations. This is not a conclusion suggested by any of the reports. So if the author of the letter is not an employee or former employee of DHS, one might ask this question: who were the alternative suspects? Now, DHS does not address this anywhere in its investigations or in its submissions. In our respectful submission, this contention to suggest that there may be uncertainty as to the identity of the author, who may be somebody outside the DHS system, again fails to address the central point that was proposed in this finding about the methodology, analysis, adequacy, and thoroughness of the investigation.
It would be enough, would it not, that there was a reasonable prospect that the letter was written by somebody who was employed by the relevant agency?
Well, that in our respectful submission was certainly the tenor of the evidence and the evidence provided by the witnesses appearing for DHS at the time. This new proposal that there may be alternative suspects is a matter that, in our respectful submission, hadn't been raised squarely at the hearing. So our submission is that you should reject that the second investigation might have turned up an alternative suspect, and for what purpose at the end of the day, I respectfully say. In our submission, we say it can plainly be accepted, particularly in the light of Mr. Allwood, who you'll recall gave evidence. He is an experienced auditor. He was called by DHS to review and explain the first and second investigation, and he agreed with the following points. First, he agreed that there was no analysis of the evidence in the report of the second investigation. Secondly, he agreed there was no analysis of how the information obtained in the second investigation might fit with respect to the information obtained in the first investigation. He agreed there was no chronology, no identification of key players, and that these were things that you would expect to see in a competent and proper investigation. And he conceded when pressed in examination by Ms. Bennet that the second investigation was not a proper or competent investigation. Commissioners, in such circumstances, we submit that you could be comfortably satisfied that the second investigation had the deficiencies in methodology, analysis, the scope of information reviewed, such that the second investigation was neither sufficient, proper, nor competent. Next part of finding one is paragraph E. And you'll see there, Commissioners, that we draw this conclusion: that DHS's failure made it less likely that the author of the three March letter would be identified, and further that the person would be free to continue working with people with disability. South Australia says in its submissions at paragraph twenty-seven is that the author of the letter may not have been identified irrespective of when an investigation commenced, and it acknowledges that the author has never been identified. In our respectful submission, we say that you can accept that the failure of the first investigation to focus on the identity of the author of the three March letter was to the detriment of finding the author. That must be clearly so, and in our respectful submission, that was accepted by Mr. Allwood, and the transcript reference is at transcript page one nine two. Next finding in one F is DHS's failures caused Victoria and James significant distress because of these events and a loss of trust and confidence in DHS. We do not understand, South Australia, to dispute that Victoria and James were significantly distressed because of these events, and because of those events, they have lost trust and confidence in DHS. That's finding one. Turn to finding two. Finding two is that Victoria and James's experiences highlight significant impact when communication breaks down and the outcomes for the person receiving care are at risk. Victoria and James say they fully endorse this finding. Paragraph twenty-nine of its submissions, DHS accepts a breakdown in communication between Victoria and James occurred and accepts that this exacerbated the concerns Victoria and James had about Mitchell's care. DHS says in its submissions that it attempted to adopt flexible communication arrangements to accommodate James's and Victoria's requests as to how they considered effective communication would best be achieved, and they note the regular minute at meetings and the involvement of a positive behaviour support specialist. It's clear, Commissioners, from the evidence that you heard, is that there was a breakdown in communication, and this affected both sides. But what wasn't able to be achieved is a way of identifying effective communication to put Mitchell at the centre in a person-centred approach. South Australia in its written submissions point to some evidence given by Ms. Kirkby and Ms. Boswell about restructuring in April 2019 of the accommodation services, and they say this introduced a flatter reporting structure, embedded team supervisors with accommodation facilities, and introduced additional positions of quality and safeguarding officers, capacity building officers, service coordinators into the service delivery structure. South Australia tells you that these changes are aimed at preventing communication breakdown, such as occurred with James and Victoria, from occurring in the future. Now, notwithstanding these changes that have occurred in South Australia, in our submission, we say the finding remains open to you, Commissioners. The importance of communication is not necessarily the structures itself, but the importance of communication is also built on the importance of effective working relationships, the capacity to listen and understand, the capacity not to bring prejudgment, the capacity to be aware of the impact of trauma in the way and the manner in which effective communication can occur, and even such things as not being constrained by our unconscious bias. There's lots of aspects to the communication, and it's an ongoing exercise rather than something that can be immediately cured by remodeling of structures. Can I turn then to finding three? Finding three, we've suggested it's open to you, Commissioners, to make a finding that Mitchell's case study highlighted a failure to be person-centred and maintain central focus on the safety and wellbeing of people in accommodation services. At paragraph thirty-six of its submission, South Australia says finding three is not available on the evidence before the Royal Commission. It says the evidence demonstrates a focus on concern for Mitchell and his safety from the moment the letter came to, the three March letter came to, its attention. It says DHS endeavoured to accommodate the wishes of the family, including in respect of flexible communication arrangements, and approving staff to work with Mitchell, as they have outlined in their submissions. They make this point that Mitchell's wellbeing more generally was not examined in any significant depth, so as to permit a finding as broad as we have posited in our submissions. In our respectful submission, sometimes it is the acute or crisis situation that needs to be examined to ask whether or not the day-to-day maintenance of services can be jeopardised or a person can be put at risk. In our respectful submission, South Australia's submissions do not substantively address the risk that occurred as a result of the three March letter and the nature of that risk in terms of what may have been before, but more importantly, what followed for Mitchell and for Victoria and James following three March 2018. The critical point is this: if the author of that letter, who described ways to poison somebody, to put acid in shampoo bottles, to cause an injury, to have a person flying through a window because the seatbelt was not on properly, is this the type of person who we want working in the disability sector? Mr. Allwood gave evidence. Ms. Bennet asked him this question. "And the Ombudsman observed that it was likely to be necessary to consider people who had worked with Mitchell over a far longer period of time. Is that not the case?" And Mr. Allwood said, "Yes, yes." And to a similar effect, Ms. Kirkby said in her evidence, quote, "There's a potential that one of our staff could have written that. That absolutely sends shivers down my spine." The concerns and the observations expressed by both Mr. Allwood and Ms. Kirkby highlight the importance of a focus on the safety and wellbeing of people in accommodation services, and that necessarily has to be person-centred. And if it is person-centred, the question is, who is around that person who may create vulnerability, in this case for Mitchell, or create a risk to Mitchell's safety and wellbeing? So in our submission, the issue is not that we looked chapter and verse on a day-by-day basis to say whether on a particular day Mitchell was safe or experienced wellbeing. Our contention is that the circumstances that arose in relation to the three March letter highlighted that there were indicators in this particular service that there may be somebody who, because of a grievance that had generated as a workplace issue, would act on that grievance by threatening the wellbeing of a person with disability and a person to whom the care and accommodation depended entirely on those working in the service. In our submission, South Australia has erroneously focused upon Mitchell rather than what we sought to raise in this finding about people in the accommodation services. Proposed finding three is focused on the safety and wellbeing in accommodation services, not just Mitchell. If the author of the letter is indeed a person who worked or works in DHS's accommodation services, then the risks to Mitchell are also risks to others receiving services at that time. When we say DHS became distracted from the aim of finding the source of the threats against Mitchell in the first investigation, they became distracted for they became distracted from identifying with respect the risks that might occur to others if that person sought to act upon their grievance in a way that would harm and threaten the wellbeing of a person with disability. Commissioners, it's worth pausing for a moment to consider what's meant by this finding. If a person employed by DHS wrote and delivered the letter to Victoria and James's home, then that person had a lot of personal and sensitive information. That person had considered a range of ways to harm a vulnerable person in the context of accommodation services. And that harm be perpetrated in a manner that could not be easily detected. The person thought carefully about that. The person considered a range of ways to kill a vulnerable person in the context of accommodation services so that the harm or the death could not be easily detected. The person committed those thoughts to writing. The person delivered those thoughts to a family member, knowing or they must have known the distress this would cause. Maintaining a central focus on the safety and wellbeing of people in its residential services meant for South Australia keeping these central facts foremost at its mind on the third of March and then in the period following the third of March. And indeed, the absence of the identity of the author means that it is ongoing. In our respectful submission, South Australia's focus was only on the steps taken by DHS with respect to Mitchell. And it has not with respect engage with the broader question of whether DHS's distraction meant there was a lack of focus on the risk posed to other people living in supported accommodation who may or may not have come in contact with the author of that letter or frankly, anyone else who was aware of that letter and who has not said anything. The submissions of South Australia do not engage with the very real possibility that the author of the three March letter could have worked in its services and continues to do so. So commissioners, in relation to Mitchell's case study, we also proposed a number of recommendations. These appear at paragraph three two two of our submissions, page eighty two. Victoria and James say they wholeheartedly agree with the recommendations. And South Australia in annexure A to its submissions has addressed the recommendations and provided to you information in respect to the actions that it has taken following the hearing in June this year. So the first recommendation in relation to Mitchell, Victoria and James, so recommendation A, is DHS should engage an independent investigator with appropriate forensic skills to conduct an investigation into the three March letter. South Australia will tell you that an investigator external to DHS has been appointed to conduct an investigation. Next recommendation, number B. Is DHS should consult with Victoria and James about the terms of reference for the investigation and be given the opportunity to participate in the investigation. And South Australia will tell you there has been correspondence with the investigator and the investigator has been instructed to consult with Victoria and James. The third recommendation C. Is DHS should commit to publicly releasing any investigation report. And South Australia says that DHS intends to consult with Victoria and James at the conclusion of the investigation about releasing any investigation report. And we accept that a report should not be released without the consent of Victoria and James. And we accept that if there is material that should not be put into the public domain, then that may be appropriate. And then finally, we make a recommendation in paragraph, sub-paragraph D. And there's two parts to that recommendation, but they're both up on the screen. Commissioners, South Australia has said that on the eleventh of March, the chief executive of DHS issued a formal letter of apology to Victoria and James, acknowledging the impact of receiving the three March letter and acknowledging the outcome of the investigation, which failed to determine the author of the letter. And you'll recall that this letter had not been received by Victoria or James. And they became aware of it in the preparation in the days immediately before the hearing in June. South Australia will tell you that a further letter was sent on the twentieth of July this year apologising to Victoria and James for the errors identified by the ombudsman's final report of twenty seven January twenty twenty one, and that's also been provided.
Do you accept, Miss Eastman, that South Australia has acted on the proposed recommendations?
Um, based on what's provided in annexure A, yes. And it may be that Mr. Simpson can tell you more about that. Obviously, I do not represent the interests of Victoria and James. And so to the extent that what has occurred meets the expectations of Victoria and James are matters that Mr. O'Brien may be able to assist you with.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm noting the time and I may start with the second case study and see how I go. And we may reach about ten past eleven before we have a break. So can I turn now to the findings and recommendations specific to Daniel Rogers? Commissioners, you'll recall, at the time of the hearing, Daniel Rogers was forty years old. And he was born and bred in Adelaide. His mother Karen Rogers gave evidence and she told you that Daniel Rogers has limited speech. And he has a limited ability to articulate for himself meaningfully or have interactive conversations. He lives with an intellectual disability. Karen Rogers told you about Daniel's early life and about the very loving family that Daniel Rogers is a part of. She told you about the agonising decision of Daniel moving to live to supported accommodation when he was eleven years old. This hearing focused on events at the accommodation described as N Street. And the specific concern for this case study was the physical injuries in the form of unexplained bruising and DHS's response. I'll also touch on issues more broadly in terms of neglect. But I'll start with the bruising. In October twenty eighteen, bruising was observed on Daniel and a record was made in Risk Man. Commissioners, you'll recall that Risk Man was the online programme which DHS offices and staff were required to enter reporting and to assess the relevant level of risk. So that's October twenty eighteen. In November twenty eighteen, Mrs. Rogers gave some evidence that she picked Daniel up for a visit to home on the weekend. And when she took him home and his jacket was removed, she observed bruises on Daniel's inner arm. She said the bruises were close together and about the size of a forefinger. She took photographs and she raised her concerns with the accommodation manager at N Street, who told her the matter would be investigated. Moving then to February twenty nineteen, Mrs. Rogers said that there were further incidents of unexplained bruising. On the seventeenth of February, staff noted bruising on the left side of Daniel's left buttock. And it was noted by the staff, but no Risk Man report was completed in relation to those observations. On the following day, the eighteenth of February, bruising was noticed again and a staff member did make a report in the Risk Man system, but the bruising was rated as insignificant. On the twenty first of February, a further Risk Man report was made by staff stating that staff had noticed a medium sized bruise on the right bottom and the colour of the bruise is pink. This bruising was again described as insignificant in the Risk Man report. On the twenty second of February, late in the afternoon or early evening, Mrs. Rogers said she received a call from N Street and she was told there was a large bruise on Daniel's back. She was asked to give her permission that N Street called the locum doctor to examine and assess Daniel. And she agreed. The locum doctor attended Daniel and the locum doctor recommended that Daniel be admitted to hospital. Mrs. Rogers went to the hospital and there she saw the bruising for herself. She was shocked by the size of the bruising and the location of the bruising. And commissioners, you'll recall that you saw the photos of the bruising as part of Mrs. Rogers's evidence. Mrs. Rogers, you will recall, was very distressed about this incident and so too was Daniel. Particularly because of his fear of hospitals and the circumstances of his attendance there. In terms of what happened next, on the twenty sixth of February, Mr. Cunningham, the accommodation services manager called and asked Mrs. Rogers to report the bruising to the police and she did so. Mrs. Rogers was also told that DHS would investigate Daniel's injury. But neither Daniel nor Mrs. Rogers was involved in any investigation undertaken by DHS. You recall her evidence was that it wasn't until about a year later that Mrs. Rogers met with Mr. Dodd, the then director of the investigation unit. Mr. Dodd told Mrs. Rogers that DHS's investigation was inconclusive. Mr. Dodd did not provide her with a copy of the report. And he told Mrs. Rogers that she would need to make a freedom of information request in order to see the report. At the time, Mrs. Rogers said this was too onerous for her. Now, at the hearing in June this year, all of the DHS witnesses expressed concern about Daniel's injuries and the extent of those injuries. Mr. Cunningham told you that the staff had received, quote, refresher training to hold them accountable because, quote, of the lack of appropriate reporting and escalating the incident. Similarly, Miss Kirkby gave evidence that she was concerned that the bruising on Daniel was not reported in a timely way. And she described this as, quote, a huge concern. She frankly accepted that there had been, and I quote again, a number of poor reporting practices on the week leading up to a family member receiving a phone call to get a locum to come and have a look at a son on a Friday night. In relation to the bruising and the unidentified and unexplained bruising, we have proposed finding which we've described as finding four, and there's three elements to that, so I'll just bring that up. We'll just focus in on finding four. You'll see the overarching finding is that DHS's response to Daniel Rogers' injury was inadequate. And the relevant parts in relation to that finding in sub-paragraph A, that DHS did not immediately investigate the cause of the bruising identified on twenty two February twenty nineteen with the DHS supporting, with the DHS staff supporting Mr. Rogers. So that was focused on the immediate staff support. The second aspect is the finding did not seek expert medical opinion as to the likely or possible timing or cause of the bruising. And then thirdly, it is not clear what the effect of this delay in investigation and escalation had on the prospects of identifying the cause of Daniel Rogers' injuries. In its submission, South Australia invites the Royal Commission to find that it did investigate the cause of bruising at an appropriate time, making appropriate use of earlier investigations that have been conducted by the South Australian Police. And in addition, South Australia disputes finding four A and four C concerning delay on the basis that we had not expressly put to any witnesses the issue of delay. Now, South Australia submits that the Risk Man reports about the bruising made in the day prior to Daniel's hospital admission should be understood in the context of general experience with bruising. And it suggested that general experience with bruising is that it worsens over time following an initial trauma. This is paragraph forty five of South Australia's submission. The source of this so-called general experience with bruising is not made clear. Particularly a general experience of bruising of such severity and the location of the bruises on Daniel's body. South Australia refers to Mr. Cunningham's evidence that Mr. Cunningham believed that the bruising started off small and seemed to have grown. That's a paragraph forty five. May we say that this contention is not consistent with the evidence? You'll recall that there was also evidence of observations made at Daniel's day programme, Windermere Park. And staff at Windermere Park observed that the bruising on Daniel Rogers was in existence on the eighteenth of February, but it did not report the bruising. So there seems to be an inconsistency about this sense that the bruising started off small and seems to have grown. Overall, South Australia's submissions about the early Risk Man reports about the bruising failed to address the inconsistency and frankly inadequacy in those reports. The bruise first, the bruising was noticed on the eighteenth of February and staff made a report in Risk Man. That bruising was described or rated as insignificant. And this was later accepted as an inaccurate characterisation. The relevant Risk Man report wasn't reviewed by Mr. Cunningham until the twentieth of February. And he did not expect to inspect himself the bruises to assess whether the report accurately described the bruising as insignificant. As I've noted, Windermere Park also noted bruising on Daniel's body on the eighteenth of February. But it did not describe the bruising in any particular way to suggest that it was minor or insignificant. And Mrs. Rogers pointed out in her submissions, and she notes this at the time, that the bruise was then of a substantial size and there was a suggestion that there was a substance that it may have been painted over. Then on the twenty first of February twenty nineteen, the further Risk Man report was that the bruising was of a medium size on the right bottom and the colour was pink. But it was still described as insignificant and again, that was inaccurate. Now, when the report was made of a major incident, the major incident was a report of the fact that Daniel had an admission to hospital, but not of the injury itself. So it's difficult in our respectful submission to accept the South Australian contention that the bruise had begun as small somewhat, or if the implication is small, being insignificant and progressed to a size where it was significant. That contention fails to address that clearly, even if small, that the reporting on the eighteenth of February through to the twenty first of February was inadequate. And the lack of actual inspection and action in relation to the bruising has not been explained. In our respectful submission, South Australia should not be able to rely on its own inaccurate records to suggest a conclusion about how the bruising presented or what its cause might be. In fact, that's precisely the point that we seek to make in our submissions. Is that the inaccurate records have been an impediment to identifying both the cause and the nature and the extent of the bruising. Now, contrary to the submissions made in the written submissions, we submit that you can rely on Miss Boswell's evidence. And she plainly accepted that the reporting was completely inadequate for the size and scale of what was happening with Daniel's bruising. That's transcript at page one six one, lines thirty nine to forty. Uh, so commissioners, I think that probably deals with the finding number four. And I will turn to finding five and six and I'll complete those. And I will turn to finding five and six, and I'll complete those matters and then suggest we have a break from morning tea, so I can turn to finding five and six. We'll deal with these two together, I think. So you'll see, finding five is Daniel Rogers' experience neglect when he resided at N Street. His personal hygiene, his grooming, a lack of care about his clothing, his choices, about his purchases, the poor state of cleanliness and maintenance at the home, all reflect an absence of a person-centered approach. And finding six, DHS failed to ensure its services and accommodations, accommodation provided to Daniel Rogers was provided in a manner consistent with the provision of an adequate standard of living and amounts to neglect. Now, you'll recall Mrs Rogers' evidence that she often felt that she had cause to complain about Daniel's care and that she decided that she had to pick her battles. She herself is a disability advocate and understands well the system supporting her son. Her evidence was that in the period following late twenty sixteen through twenty seventeen and beyond, that she felt things were deteriorating. At the hearing, South Australia's witnesses gave frank evidence that parts of Mrs Rogers' experience and Daniel's treatment had been unacceptable. For example, Ms Kirkby spoke about how she was concerned that Mrs Rogers felt that she did have to pick her battles. And she appropriately said this. Why is that? And what does that say about our culture? And what we need to do about it? That was an important observation and one, may we say, with respect of great insight. Likewise, Ms Boswell expressed her concern about the way Mrs Rogers felt. When Mr Cunningham gave evidence about these matters in terms of clothing, the purchases, the medication and the like, he said the failure to pack Daniel's proper clothes and medication for the holiday in Melbourne was unacceptable. And that he told staff they had to take responsibility for their actions. Likewise, when he was asked about the purchase of the bed linen, and you'll remember the evidence concerning the purchase of the quilt, that was done without any reference to Mrs Rogers or Daniel, Mr Cunningham expressed his concerns. He said he was concerned the family had been lied to. But he said he expected clients to be involved in decision-making around their purchases. The South Australian witnesses had no difficulty in frankly addressing the concerns that the conditions in which Daniel lived involved a degree of neglect. For example, Ms Kirkby was asked if N Street had, quote, "an air of neglect", and she said absolutely. That's transcript page one-seven-two at line thirty-three. Commissioner Bennett, you asked Mr Cunningham why no one else saw the, quote, "general air of neglect", and Mr Cunningham said that in his view, it was acknowledged and attempts made. In its submissions, at paragraph fifty-nine, South Australia accepts that the standard of personal hygiene, grooming and cleanliness of N Street provided for Daniel was at times unacceptable. It also accepts that on one or more occasion insufficient care was taken in relation to his clothing. In respect of the choices about his purchases, only one instance is identified in the evidence. We accept that. However, at paragraph sixty, South Australia contends that while the standard fell short of what DHS aimed to meet, it submits, Commissioners, that you cannot make a finding that the shortfall in standards amounts to neglect as defined by the Royal Commission itself. The Royal Commission defines neglect in this way. Says neglect includes physical and emotional neglect, passive neglect and willful deprivation. Neglect can be a single significant incident or a systemic issue that involves depriving a person with disability of the basic necessities of life, such as food, drink, shelter, access, mobility, clothing, education, medical care and treatment. Mrs Rogers says in her written submission that it was from Daniel not being cleaned when he had used his valves, from not having his teeth cleaned properly, that he was also regularly in other people's clothing and clothing which required ironing was never ironed. I think Mrs Rogers captures this very well. And in our respectful submission, to suggest that the finding of neglect is not open suggests that with respect, South Australia is taking a very legalistic and narrow approach to what constitutes neglect. At the core of our submission is that South Australia failed to adopt a person-centered approach which considers the significance of a person being unable to participate in the community, unable to articulate his needs, and the consequence being left in a state where he is not clean or not appropriately addressed. A service that treats residents interchangeably, so it doesn't matter whose quilt it is, it doesn't matter who wears whose clothes or somebody else's clothes, is, in our respectful submission, indicative of neglect. Being clean, being well cared for, is a fundamental aspect of all of our lives. And it's something that a person with disability living in accommodation services is not able to perhaps attend to these matters for himself or reasonably expect. Being repeatedly inappropriately dressed or poorly groomed reflects a failure to afford essential care and dignity. Dignity of human beings is a dignity to be treated as a human, not to be cast aside. And in our respectful submission, findings five and six are available on the evidence. I don't want to go into detail on the financial arrangements, but Commissioners, you'll recall that there was evidence about the financial arrangements at the hearing. And we haven't sought a specific finding in relation to the circumstances around the management of Daniel Rogers' money and the way in which that money was accounted for. Uh, but we do acknowledge South Australia's submissions, particularly at paragraphs sixty-two and sixty-four, where they seek to address and make certain acknowledgements in relation to financial matters. Now, Commissioners, the next topic I want to deal with shortly in relation to Daniel Rogers' case study is about matters raised by the Commonwealth after Daniel left N Street and returned to live with his parents. And it may be an appropriate time to adjourn now, and then I can complete those submissions and the balance of the matters that I need to address.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms Eastman. It's now nearly eleven-twenty. We'll resume at eleven-thirty-five. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to say just something briefly about Daniel Rogers and Mrs Rogers' experience after he left N Street. You'll remember the evidence is that he returned to live with his parents and he becomes an NDIS participant. And Mrs Rogers gave some evidence about what might be perhaps politely described as some challenging aspects of engaging with the NDI. She gave evidence that she gave up her work to support Daniel. And she said that the experience of navigating the NDIS was like proving that Daniel had a disability all over again. Now, we have not sought any specific findings in relation to this aspect of Mrs Rogers' evidence. But the Australian Government in its submissions, paragraph nine, says representing the NDI, it acknowledges Mrs Rogers' evidence. It acknowledges that the NDIS can be difficult to navigate at times. And the NDI also expresses its regret for the delay Mrs Rogers and Daniel experienced while it conducted Daniel Rogers' plan review. And we acknowledge that concession by the Australian Government. Now, the government also then goes on at paragraphs ten and eleven to refer to the independent review of the NDIS Act conducted by Mr David Tune, the Tune Review, and notes that it identifies opportunities to make the NDIS process simpler and more straightforward. For today's purpose and for the purpose of this public hearing, we don't propose to engage in those steps taken by the Australian Government. But Commissioners, the extent to which the Tune Review identified opportunities to make the NDIS process as simpler or more straightforward are matters that will inform your ongoing work. Now, the next finding that we proposed, finding seven, brings together some systemic issues that we thought have and thought could consider, the Commissioners could consider arising out of both Mitchell and Daniel Rogers' case study. So we'll just bring up finding number seven. Finding number seven is that there has been no personal or institutional accountability with respect to the treatment of Mitchell or Daniel Rogers. The individuals and their families have no closure on these significant impacts on their family members and themselves. A critical issue here is about accountability. Commissioners, accountability doesn't necessarily mean blame. It doesn't mean punishment. But what it does mean is the importance of being accountable where an organisation or a person has responsibility, where a person or an organisation has committed to providing services at a particular level or standards. And accountability is acknowledging that if there has been a shortfall or a failure or indeed a significant deficiency in the delivery of those services, that a person takes responsibility. That's what we mean by accountability. DHS in paragraph sixty-seven of the submissions acknowledges that there were deficiencies in its handling of the incidents involving Mitchell and Daniel Rogers. It refers again in its submissions to having made significant improvements in the culture and practice relating to service delivery, incident reporting and communications with clients and families. And it points to evidence before the Royal Commission, which despite its failings demonstrates that DHS and its employees assume both responsibility and accountability for the incidents that occurred for both Mitchell and Daniel Rogers, and these are set out in detail in paragraph sixty-eight of the submissions. We make this respectful submission that while DHS concedes deficiencies in the handling of these matters, it resists a finding with respect to full and true accountability. We submit that the finding as proposed in finding seven remains open for these reasons. First, the immediate response to Mitchell's safety was marred by a failure to take a step to identify and hold accountable the person who authored the letter. This illustrates a lack of accountability and it is at the core of our submissions. Secondly, there is perhaps a strange conformity in this aspect of South Australia's submissions. In the face of clear failings such as the failure of DHS to communicate with Victoria and James after the few months following the Third of March letter, this communication failure was not explained. Indeed, James and Victoria learnt that the department had not investigated the letter via the intervention of the principal community visitor and the community visitor scheme, not through the department. DHS accepted that James and Victoria suffered significant distress because of the events occurring around the Three March Letter. And they accept that there was a loss of trust and confidence. And then at paragraph twenty-nine, DHS accepts the breakdown in communication exacerbated concerns about Mitchell's care. The failures are not disputed, nor is it disputed, as I've said earlier, no one has identified the author of the Three March Letter. So any suggestion that there has been adequate accountability should not be accepted in our respectful submission.
Um, Ms Eastman, the proposed adverse finding is in that in these terms, there has been no personal or institutional accountability. You, I think, just then said no adequate personal or institutional accountability. Is that the way you now put the finding, you think?
Um, yes, if it needs to be qualified from an absolute no to perhaps adequacy, then Commissioners, we're prepared to accept that modification to our proposed finding. So finding eight is the final finding. And we'll just bring that up. You'll see, this finding proposes that DHS failed to create an environment where Mitchell and Daniel Rogers were safe and well supported. DHS's policies were not followed and the failure to implement the policies and procedures in a person-centered and at times resulted in, and then there's a number of dot points, we just bring those up. And you'll see the three dot points identified there. Now, paragraph sixty-nine, South Australia concedes that the case studies highlighted a number of instances in which DHS failed to create an environment where Mitchell and Daniel were well supported. And they accept that finding is available. South Australia submit that the evidence before the Royal Commission, however, does not permit a finding that Mitchell or Daniel Rogers were unsafe in DHS accommodation. And that during the course of our PH fourteen hearing in June, we did not examine the degree to which Mitchell and/or Daniel were supported more generally. And South Australia submits that because the case studies focused on specific incidents where Daniel or Mitchell were not well supported, as they ought to have been, we can't then make that broad a general finding. We accept that obviously the focus of the case study were on particular incidents and events. But we do submit that if one looks at those case studies and draws the systemic issues of concern, then we do submit that the finding remains open. We submit that the contention made by South Australia here is a distinction made without a difference. And can I just take you to the evidence of Ms Boswell? I put to Ms Boswell at the hearing this. Would you, you would accept, wouldn't you, that things such as making observations about how a person presents, how they smell, their grooming, those sorts of things, where you've got to get a set of eyes that might assist in identifying risk to somebody's safety and wellbeing? Would you agree with that? And she said that she did. That's really at the core of it.
Do you have the reference, please?
Yes, the transcript reference is at page transcript three-seven-three, lines ten to fifteen. That's the essence of it, is that while we did focus on acute and critical events, you also had that sense from the evidence of the families that in the lead-up to what might be called the acute or crisis issue, there was a sense of concern, a sense of deterioration, as Mrs Rogers described it in Daniel's overall wellbeing. And Commissioners, you've got a sense of it with the evidence around the audit reports that looked at the accommodation and questioned the accommodation. So in our respectful submission, paragraph of finding eight remains open to you.
It's never been suggested, as I understand it, but there was neglect over a period of two decades of the evidence related to certain periods, and that I take it is the focus of the submission.
Yes, it is. So Commissioners, I want to move to part two of the hearing. And as I've said, the Royal Commission was not investigating the cause of Miss And as I've said, the Royal Commission was not investigating the cause of Miss Smith's death at this public hearing. And we were very mindful of the ongoing criminal investigation and other investigations. We raised the circumstances of Miss Smith's death because her death shocked the community. Her deaths and the circumstances have continued to resonate with the community. But it's not just this Royal Commission. Following her death, a number of investigations and inquiries and reviews were set in train. And specifically, this included investigations by the South Australian Police, the South Australian Coroner, and also Safe Work South Australia. But at this public hearing, we examined two reports. And Chair, you've mentioned these earlier this morning. The first is the South Australian Safeguarding Task Force, and it produced an interim, final and supplementary report. And the second was the independent review of the adequacy of the regulation of supports and services provided to Anne-Marie Smith, an NDIS participant. And that was a report commissioned by the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission. It was conducted by a former judge of the Federal Court, Mr. Robertson. And we're referred to the report as the Robertson Report in our submissions. Now, Commissioners, we mentioned this in our opening address. But your terms of reference require you to have regard to the findings and recommendations of previous relevant reports and inquiries. And these two reports are materially relevant to the work of the Royal Commission. According, the Public Hearing fourteen sought to make inquiries and to understand the responses of relevant agencies such as the Department of Human Services in South Australia, the NDIA and the NDIS Commission, and how it has sought to address the recommendations made in the two reports. And in this respect, we say the approach taken at the public hearing was consistent with the terms of reference. So the South Australian Safeguarding Report came about on the twenty-first of May, twenty twenty, when the Minister for Human Services in South Australia established the task force. The responsibility of the task force was to, and I quote, "examine the current gaps in oversight and safeguarding for people living with disability in South Australia." The Safeguarding Task Force published an interim and final report on the fifth of June and the thirty-first of July respectively. And then the supplementary report was provided on the twenty-eighth of September, twenty twenty. The totality of that work identified fourteen safeguarding gaps and seven recommendations were made to address those gaps. Those recommendations were directed to the NDIA, the NDIS Commission and the State Government of South Australia. The Robertson Report came about as a result of the NDIS Commission engaging Mr. Robertson on or around the twenty-sixth of May last year. Mr. Robertson was asked to conduct an independent review of the adequacy of the regulation of the supports and services provided to Miss Smith. And he was asked to identify and describe the nature and levels of support provided to Miss Smith as a person with disability and to consider mechanisms that might have guarded against Miss Smith's particular vulnerability, recognising that Miss Smith had been living in relative isolation since around two thousand and nine. Now, on the thirty-first of August last year, Mr. Robertson provided the NDIS Commission with two reports, a complete and unredacted version and a version that could be made public, which included various reductions. The version we relied on was the redacted version and the one that was publicly available. Commissioners, our written submissions deal with the issues in some detail. But can I just perhaps draw out of our submissions to say that what we sought to do was to identify three key issues arising from the two reports? And I want to speak to these issues. The first key issue that we addressed was the issue of identifying heightened risk of neglect or abuse. And this is dealt with in our submissions at paragraph two hundred and three to two hundred and twenty. Now, this first key issue seeks to identify what are the circumstances of heightened risk? Now, you might remember that at the hearing, a number of witnesses talked about vulnerable participants in the NDIS or about people with disability being vulnerable. We sought to explore that expression and that description of vulnerable. And while the term vulnerable has been used and it appears in both reports, we think a better expression is heightened risk or at risk. That's important because it shifts that sense that vulnerable is something inherent in the person. But as Mr. Robertson said in his report, being vulnerable or being at risk of harm or neglect is not static. Person with a disability may become vulnerable or may be vulnerable at one point, but cease to be vulnerable. It is also worth saying that a person with a disability does not by any means make you vulnerable. I'm concerned in this case with a cluster of circumstances which made Miss Smith vulnerable. Language is important. And if we use the adjective vulnerable to describe a person with disability, we overlook a fundamental matter of importance. And that is, having a disability does not make you inherently vulnerable. It's what occurs around you, the people you engage with, the services provided, that can create a situation of vulnerability. And it's for this reason that we feel better to focus on not the inherent qualities of the person, but to use language such as heightened risk or at risk. Now, in relation to identifying circumstances of risk or heightened risk, the Safeguarding Report stated that having a process to identify potentially vulnerable participants is key. And the Safeguarding Report said that there should be processes that occur to enable the identification of risk or heightened risk. The Safeguarding Report said that the NDIA must develop a methodology to assess the potential vulnerability of participants as part of the planning processes and to put supports in place according to the participant's level of vulnerability. Mr. Robertson found in his report that the NDIS Commission should act to identify earlier people with disability who are vulnerable to harm or neglect. Every stage of decision-making, including corrective regulation, should be alive to factors indicating that a participant may be vulnerable to harm or neglect. And Mr. Robertson said that the NDIA should also act in the planning process and continually. Now, in its submissions, the Australian Government has addressed the key issue, number one, that we identified. As I said, we're not seeking any findings in that regard. But in its submissions at paragraph twenty-seven, the Australian Government says this. To the extent that the Safeguarding Task Force Report or council assisting is suggesting that the NDIA does not have a methodology to assess the potential vulnerability of participants as part of the planning process, and it does not, quote, "put supports in place according to the participant's level of vulnerability", the Australian Government does not accept this suggestion. Well, we cannot speak for the South Australian Task Force, and I don't propose to do so. But may I respectfully submit, in response to this contention from the Australian Government, that it was no part of our evidence or submission to suggest that there was no methodology? Rather, what we sought to do was to identify the concerns raised in both reports. And it seemed to be clear that the issue was not so much that there was no methodology, but the issue is clearly, if there is a methodology in the planning process, is it appropriate, is it adapted to identify risk? That leads me to key issue number two. Key issue number two is that risk, what is risk management once circumstances of heightened risk are identified? And we've addressed this in our written submissions at paragraph two hundred and twenty-one to two hundred and forty-eight. In summary, key issue two concerns the appropriate response once any heightened risk of abuse or neglect has been identified. And the two reports consider a number of safeguarding responses for NDIS participants identified as being at heightened risk. One question was whether a specific person or officer should have overall responsibility for the safety and wellbeing of a person at risk of abuse or neglect. Should there be a person designated with overall responsibility for NDIS participants at heightened risk of harm? And in our submission, a major theme of the two reports is that a piecemeal provision of care to the, sorry, that the piecemeal provision of care is not an effective way of managing heightened risk when so identified. Mr. Robertson said this in his report. As it was put to me in submissions, the NDIS has many moving parts with many roles. This complexity may lead to an end point where there is nobody that has a locus of responsibility to make sure things are going well overall for the individual. Because there are so many different players, there is no natural person to contact when things are not going so well. We certainly adopt Mr. Robertson's observations. The Safeguarding Report referred to the NDIA's local area coordinator, the NDIA planner, the plan manager and the support coordinator. And the Safeguarding Report made this observation. As well as this cast of players, there is an array of functions they perform from local area coordination, support connection, support coordination, specialist support coordination, plan management and planning. If that sounds confusing and unnecessarily complex, it is because it is. So the major thing captured from these two reports is in Mr., perhaps dealt with in Mr. Robertson's recommendation. And he made this recommendation. For each vulnerable NDIS participant, there should be a specific person with overall responsibility for that participant's safety and wellbeing. That individual should be clearly identified by name and ideally introduced in person to the vulnerable NDIS participants. Although not within my terms of reference, that individual should be identified in a participant's plan. Now, in this context, the Australian Government in its submissions at paragraph thirteen to fourteen refers to our use of the term shared responsibility in our council-assisting submissions. And it notes that that expression, shared responsibility, was not used in either the Safeguarding Report or Mr. Robertson's report. And the government is critical that we provide no explanation or discussion of that term. Commissioners, you may reject that submission with respect. The term shared responsibility is raised in the council-assisting submissions at paragraph one hundred and twenty-two. And it was raised in reference to the accounting of funds at the End Street. And we said in our submissions that at End Street, it appears that no single person had primary or overarching responsibility. Mr. Cunningham described it as shared responsibility. The term was also used in the examination of Mr. Hoffman as part of his oral evidence. And Mr. Hoffman accepted that shared responsibility was one way of putting the approach that the NDIS took to looking at safety. And the relevant transcript references appear at page two five two to two five three. I put this to him. I asked him, it's the case, isn't it, that your view is that there shouldn't be a single locus of responsibility? And your view is consistent with the quality and safeguarding framework, that it is different players, starting with the participant, share responsibility for promoting safety and wellbeing of a participant and working to reduce risk of abuse, violence, neglect and exploitation. And the role of nominees and statutorily appointed guardians is especially significant. That's what you say in paragraph seventy-five. Mr. Hoffman said, yes, that's right. And so I asked him this. Do we take it by that, that it's the NDIA's view that looking at safety is a shared responsibility? And Mr. Hoffman agreed, that would be one way of putting it, yes. Now, paragraph thirty-two to forty-three, the Australian Government in its submissions addresses key issue number two. The government acknowledges that the matter of whether there should be a person with overall responsibility for NDIS participants who are at heightened risk of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation may be considered as part of the NDIS framework review. And it says that the NDIA is currently reviewing support coordination service models to consider how it could be improved to better support participant outcomes. It says its reform initiatives and will explicate the important role of support coordinators amongst others in the context of participant safety. So again, Commissioners, in our respectful submission, it's right not to make any findings in relation to key issue two. But we do note that the Royal Commission will need to continue to examine these issues, improve it, including matters that are the subject of current review by the NDIS. In this context, we also looked at the issue of conflict of interest. And one of the elements was whether there was a conflict of interest where the provider of support coordination is also the same provider that provides core supports. The Safeguarding Report found that any support coordinator that is employed by an agency that also provides other services for that participant is not an independent pair of eyes and therefore a conflict of interest. So the Safeguarding Report further found that to not separate the roles invites conflicts of interest and in the wrong hands of the participant is captured. A paragraph forty-two of its submissions, the Australian Government says on the issue of conflict of interest and support coordination that it acknowledges that there is potential for a conflict of interest in certain circumstances. It also acknowledges that this is an issue that should be kept under consideration. The Commonwealth also refers to some material identified by Ms. Gale at paragraph forty-three of its submissions. And I note that in passing, Commissioners, without requiring you to address that for the purpose of today. And finally, key issue three was concerned with information sharing. And we've addressed this in our written submissions at paragraph two hundred and forty-nine to two six six. Question here relates to information sharing between the State of South Australia, the NDIA and the NDIS Commission. In summary, Mr. Robertson recommended greater levels of information sharing between the various entities at a number of levels. And the Safeguarding Report also referred to gaps in information sharing as part of its inquiry and recommendations. A paragraph forty-four of its submissions, the Australian Government acknowledges our council assisting's assessment of the evidence in relation to the third key issue. And welcome to the conclusion that, and I'll quote, "the evidence suggests that South Australia, the NDIA and the NDIS Commission have taken steps to increase information sharing and the process is ongoing." Now, in that regard, we also note the Australian Government refers to the National Disability Insurance Scheme Amendment, round brackets, Improving Supports for at-Risk Participants, close round brackets, Bill two thousand and twenty-one. The bill was introduced on the third of June, twenty twenty-one, and it largely relates to information sharing arrangements that have the effect of implementing Mr. Robertson's recommendations, number one, five, seven, eight and nine of his review. five, seven, eight and nine of his review. Um, so commissioners, you do not need to make any findings with respect to this step, but to watch the progress of the bill and then the extent to which the matters in the proposed amendments to the NDIA Act address those concerns.
I assume, Ms Eastman, that the bill was not yet.
Um, I don't think it has, uh, but I can double check if there's been any developments in recent times, but Parliament's not presently sitting.
Yeah.
Um, finally, can I just refer commissioners to paragraphs three hundred and twenty-one of our submissions where we identified matters that could be the subject of further consideration or inquiry by the Royal Commission in its ongoing work in relation to disability service providers? So at, um, I won't read them all out, but essentially it's looking at the role of the NDIS Commission and other external regulators in oversight. Secondly, the development of a national community visitor scheme. Thirdly, model policies and procedures for effective and appropriate complaint systems that are person-centered and trauma-informed. The extent to which people with disability who have high support needs have appropriate choice and control over where they live, with whom they live, and that they are not left vulnerable to violence, abuse and the risk of homelessness. And then finally, the risks and whether there is an inherent conflict of interest where a participant receives support coordination from an NDIS provider that also provides core NDIS supports to the participants. And I accept the comments made by the Australian Government that we should also add in there the words include the accommodation. We note the Australian Government at paragraph fifty-five has said that it welcomes the opportunity to provide further input to the Royal Commission in relation to these matters. And there is, uh, uh, some discussion about the extent to which we may have, um, anticipated the development of a community visitor scheme. Our submissions were based on Mr Head's, um, statement and his evidence. But we acknowledge paragraphs fifty-seven to fifty-nine of the Australian Government's submission that there is work to be done in relation to whether there is a national community visitor scheme. So commissioners, unless there's any further questions, those are our submissions.
Thank you, Ms Eastman. I'll just inquire of my colleagues whether they have any questions. First, Commissioner Bennett, do you have any questions to put to Ms Eastman? I think you may be on mute.
No, I don't, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McEwan.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Eastman.
Thank you. Can I just say, um, Chair, so I think Karen Rogers is, um, participating today. She was not represented at the hearing and she'd like an opportunity to make a short statement to you, which you could receive as a submission.
Yes, well, I think that formally speaking, it's necessary to give Ms Rogers leave to do that and, uh, that should be done. So Ms Rogers will have leave to make a statement. Um, and the basis for making that statement, uh, I should make clear is that these will be submissions. They're not regarded as part of the evidence in the, at the hearing. So I don't know whether we can bring Ms Rogers up on the screen, can we? Good morning, Ms Rogers. Oh, good afternoon, I'm sorry. Good afternoon.
It's morning in South Australia, that's right.
Yeah, but that doesn't count. It's, it's important. Um, so whichever it is, thank you very much for coming to the commission and thank you for the written comments that you have provided. Each of the commissioners has a copy of the written comments you've provided. I should just make it clear so that you know where we all are. Commissioner Bennett is joining the hearing from Canberra. Commissioner McEwan is participating in the hearing from Sydney, as am I, but Commissioner McEwan and I happen to be in different rooms. So if you would care to make the statement that, pardon me, you intend to make, please do that now. And as I've explained, that will be regarded as a submission. And as with all other submissions, it's not part of the evidence in the case.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity. To say that I was pleased that the Royal, when the Royal Disability Commission, um, was announced, sorry, the Disability Royal Commission, would be a major understatement. I wanted people to know about what was happening here in Australia. When I wrote to the Royal Commission in two thousand and nineteen and subsequently testified at the hearing fourteen in Adelaide during this year, my main intentions were to bring public attention to what is happening to people living with disability and to have such an impact that changes would be made to improve the way they were treated by society and very importantly, by the people paid to support them. I believe that most people are unaware that even today in two thousand and twenty-one, people with disability are still subject to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation on a daily basis. After testifying at the Royal Commission, I heard testimony of others. People I had trusted and put my faith in to support my beautiful son. These people failed. They failed in their duty of care to Daniel. They failed to honestly report situations. They failed to provide a safe environment for Daniel. And they failed to include Daniel in the very basic spending of his own money. And yes, only one incident was actually um, given as evidence, but I can assure you there were many, many, many more incidents of Daniel's money being spent without his knowledge. And they failed to address situations brought to their attention. This was evident by the fact that the situation of Daniel's hygiene was brought to the attention of the Department of Human Services manager almost weekly, despite him denying that when being, when he was testifying. After hearing testimony from the Department of Human Services auditor, Tony Allwood, at the Royal Commission, I was devastated. The very people who I had trusted and relied upon knew that the men at End Street were being neglected and they didn't act. I would like to briefly talk about the incident of severe bruising of Daniel, which occurred in February two thousand and nineteen. After hearing testimony about the serious inadequacies of reporting of the injuries, I had difficulty in controlling my emotions. I had seen the photographs from Daniel's day auctions, but from earlier in the week, showing bruising extending right across one side of Daniel's back. How someone can report this as insignificant causes me to question what's being covered up. The fact that there was testimony that the Department of Human Services staff had spoken to Daniel about what, about this caused me great concern. Very few staff there actually knew how to communicate effectively with Daniel, however I do. And had they at any stage wanted to question Daniel, which I do not believe they did, they should have included me so I could ask Daniel questions in a way he could understand and respond. Also, I would ask when this questioning occurred as we brought Daniel home immediately after notifying management of the injuries. I was horrified to hear the manager report that there was no bullying towards the staff member who reported the bruising to me some four days after it had been observed. The manager himself was in fact the person who told me that the shift supervisor asked the support worker in very graphic terms if he was having an affair with me and that's why he kept talking to me about this. I was upset to read the statement that Daniel had been reimbursed for the comforter, the very expensive quilt purchased with Daniel's money without his involvement. The quilt that disappeared. Daniel was never reimbursed for that quilt and the quilt was never found. There are so many inconsistencies and untruths that I have read and heard. I could go on for hours. However, that would not be helpful. I may sound emotional, but I make no apology for that. I am emotional. This is my son. This is my beautiful, innocent and defenceless son. And yes, I will say it because I believe it's absolutely the truth. He is my vulnerable son. The guilt that I felt when Daniel went into care has been compounded because I allowed this to happen. I had known for some time Daniel was unhappy returning to End Street after his weekly trips home, but I didn't act. Since Daniel has come home and lives in a safe and caring environment, he has blossomed. He's talking more, he's exemplarily clean. So he no longer smells all the time. And he has regular dental hygiene visits, so he no longer has bad breath. Daniel still has some signs of trauma. He still becomes agitated when we go near End Street and he'll hit himself in the head and he cries out, don't want it. We still engage the assistance of a psychologist in addressing the issues as they arise. This is covered by Daniel's NDIS package. We, as a family, will continue to provide care for Daniel. We specifically handpick support workers who work with him and we watch them closely because trust is a major issue. I won't lie, it's not easy. Daniel is regularly awake at night and he's often very noisy during the night. He's often incontinent at night and this sometimes necessitates up to three full loads of washing just of bedding in the morning. There are appointments with a psychologist, occupational therapist, a podiatrist, a support coordinator, a developmental educator, an exercise physiologist, the specialist dental clinic, medical appointments and the NDIA to coordinate. Last year, we also coordinated an appeal against the NDIS. An appeal we won, but it took many hours and it was at great emotional and financial expense. Daniel now has an individualized day program targeted at the development of his ability and skill and increases his community networks. I've developed and I coordinate this program and I oversee the support of the three workers working with Daniel. I step in if staff are unavailable so his program can continue. All of these things take time and as Ms Eastman said, I have given up work to ensure that Daniel has a good life. Daniel will continue to live in the family home until the day he leaves this earth. When my husband and I are no longer here, his siblings will oversee his support. I want to thank the Royal Commission for digging into Daniel's situation and extracting information that, although it's been difficult to hear, has answered many questions for us, Daniel's family. This is not the end of Daniel's story. He will continue to blossom in his loving environment. But we need to ensure that the Daniels of Australia without family involvement are not forgotten. There must be a way that support can be monitored. And I will continue to implore that the recommendations of the Royal Commission will be listened to and acted on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms Rogers. Thank you again for giving evidence of the hearing in June and thank you for your statement that you have just, um, given. Thank you so much. Mr O'Brien, I think that the timetable, as I understand it, provides for you to make some submissions, your submissions on behalf of Victoria and James now.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, as has been acknowledged already in submissions and in the overview by the Chair this morning, Victoria and James agree with key themes and findings outlined in council assisting submissions. They wholeheartedly agree with all the recommendations that council assisting has submitted upon. Uh, they also agree and commend all the adverse findings as proposed by council assisting to the Royal Commission. Victoria and James do urge the Royal Commission to consider two additional adverse findings against the department. Victoria and James say that there can be no doubt that, one, the DHS investigations into the letter were seriously flawed for the matters set out by council assisting. And two, the failure to properly investigate and the manner in which the investigation took place demonstrated a lack of appropriate concern for the welfare of those people in DHS care. The first available finding arises and follows the evidence related to the clear instructions from the director of DHS to the first investigator in relation to the letter to not follow up on establishing who the author of the three March letter was. And this is, and this is set out in paragraph eighty-one of council assisting submissions. Council assisting there writes, um, concerns over the scope of the first investigation are exacerbated by a diary note located by Mr Allwood. And you'll remember he was the auditor who looked at these investigations in two thousand and twenty-one. The diary note was in the IMU investigation diary and was apparently made by a person who reviewed the investigation of the file of the first investigation. The diary note states, "Clear instructions were given to the investigator at the time from the director not to follow up on establishing who the author was." And that, um, diary note was exhibited in the proceedings at exhibit, at exhibit, uh, fourteen dash one oh five. We say that-
So, Mr O'Brien, is there a date for that diary note? It's not referred to, I don't think, in council assisting submissions.
The date of the diary note is a date in two thousand and twenty-one.
No, I understand that, but there's no more precise date that we have.
No, but I'll have the, I'll have the exhibit found out and I'll come back to your, to your commissioner. Um, the evidence we say clearly suggests that it was very likely, very likely that, one, the author of the three March letter was an employee of DHS. Two, a person who at some stage had worked with Mitchell. Three, and therefore probably was working or had worked or was going to work into the future with other residents or people in the care of DHS. We say therefore that this direction, this clear instruction to the investigator by the director of DHS at the time, uh, represented a very serious failure and a dereliction of responsibilities of the department. Uh, council, the, the, during the, during the hearing, Mr Allwood, uh, that orders who examined those, the investigation was, uh, crossing, was examined by council assisting then, uh, Ms Bennett. And we've set out in our submissions at paragraph sixteen, commissioners, uh, the exchange relevant, uh, to this investigation diary. It was squarely put, we say, that it was a serious dereliction of duty. Uh, and it is, it was fairly put by Ms Bennett that the, um, letter represented a grave departure uh, from the, from what should have been the primary focus of the first investigation. There can be no doubt that identifying the letter of the author of the three, three March letter should at all times, but particularly in the early stages, have been the first and foremost priority for DHS. And this direction by the director at the time not to follow that up represented a significant departure from the duty of care that DHS had for the safety and wellbeing of the people who live and are cared for by their services. And for that reason, we say that it is open for the Commission to make this additional adverse finding against the department. The instructions from the DHS, the director of DHS to the investigator in the first investigation to not follow up on establishing the identity of the three March letter represented a dereliction of its responsibilities to the safety and welfare of those in DHS care. In paragraphs eighteen through to twenty-three, commissioners, we set out a second available adverse finding against the department. And that is that DHS wrongly and inappropriately blamed James for their failure to properly investigate the identity of the author of the three March letter. And this additional finding arises from the evidence related to the manner in which DHS attempted to blame James for the flawed scope in there in all three investigations into the three March letter. In response to council assisting's line of inquiry regarding the unknown author of the three March letter, uh, Mr Allwood highlighted the suggestion of this blame against James. at, in the transcript of page one ninety-eight, line thirty-five, Mr Allwood said, the then Director of the Incident Management Unit had met with James and at that meeting, James had indicated, according to the notes of the meeting made by the then Director, that James had indicated that he was not concerned about the letter or identifying who sent the letter. As that evidence demonstrates, D H S suggests that James did not want to know the identity of the author. And in turn, they say, this shaped the manner and scope of the investigations, series of investigations indeed, by D H S into the Third of March Letter. In effect, D H S blamed James for the failure to properly identify the author. And this represented in our submission, a serious example of blaming the victim. The suggestion that James did not want the author identified is entirely wrong. At paragraph fifty-one of his statement, tended in the proceedings and exhibited, he said, in relation to the letter, the Director of I M U expressed the view that the letter was intended to cause distress to our family. He said that the department would investigate the author of the letter, but due to privacy and confidentiality, we would have no knowledge of their internal investigation. I recall saying to the Director of I M U, words to the effect, we don't need to know who it is, as long as the department knows who it is. I left the meeting believing, believing that although we would not be given details of the identity of the author, we would be informed officially of the outcome of the investigations. James was also asked by Council assisting about his interest in not pursuing the author of the letter. He said in answer to those questions that it was not just the author of the letter, but the culture that would allow somebody to write the letter and to potentially carry out the threats that are detailed in the letter. And that, Commissioners, is at page forty-five, from line thirty to forty-five of the transcript. Council assisting put the issue of D H, D H S's habit of blaming James squarely to, to Mr Allwood as well. And that exchange is set out in our submissions at paragraph twenty-three. So this was, uh, this adverse finding, we say, Commissioners, was squarely put to the department through that examination set out in paragraph, a portion of which is set out in paragraph twenty-three of our submissions. Can I address, um, your Commissioners very briefly, please, on some of the issues raised by the department? That the department have contended that it took the investigation of the letter seriously. Victoria and James agree with the observations and submissions of Council assisting regarding it not being taken seriously enough. At exhibit, um, and it certainly was not taken seriously from the perspective of Victoria and James. If I can take you back, Commissioners, to their statements prepared with a reflection of their thoughts at the time. Victoria, at paragraph fifty-nine of her statement, which was exhibited at fourteen twenty-seven, said, despite the implementation of interim measures in the following days, James and I did not feel comfortable with how the department was responding. We felt there was a lack of timeliness in the actions being taken by the department. It also did not appear that the matter had been escalated to the senior executives. We questioned why the chief executive or other senior representatives were not involved. No one at the department appeared to be concerned. The matter was left to be managed at a local level. And also James's observations as to what was happening at that time in relation to the department's investigation. James reflected and said at paragraph forty-three of his statement, exhibited at fourteen twenty-eight, I did not feel comfortable, sorry, I did not feel confident in the approach being taken by the department, as it was an extraordinary event which I felt was being met without the necessary urgency. As Council assisting observed in her submissions earlier today, Victoria and James found out about there having been no investigation into the author of the letter from the South Australian Community Visitor. And the South Australian Community Visitor also expressed serious reservations about the very poor and inadequate nature of the investigation at the time. The community visitor, Mr Cochrane A M, wrote to James and Victoria later in the year, on the twenty-third of October, two thousand and eighteen. And the email between Victoria and James and the community visitor is tendered in exhibit fourteen fifty-two. And it's worthwhile quoting, Commissioners, what the community visitor had to say. He said in this email, I've met with the Director of I M U and have confirmed that his unit did not investigate nor interview staff regarding the threatening letter. So I remain concerned that this was never properly investigated by either the police nor the FAIR team, and I've stated this in my annual report. Mr Cochrane goes on to say, the Director of I M U had the view that the primary concern was to make sure Mitchell was safe and to ensure that he had close monitoring and support, which was confident that the local management had organised, that very senior departmental staff were kept informed of this to prioritise and ensure the safeguards were in place. He, that is, the Director of I M U, was of the view that he thought the letter was aimed driving a wedge between management and yourselves, that is, Victoria and James, and that he, in his view, was that he didn't really think the letter, letter writer would actually carry out the threats to Mitchell. Mr Cochrane says, for me personally, as a social worker for thirty years, I felt the letter was extremely concerning and disturbing. And, and in that, a lot of thought and consideration had gone into it. By this, I mean, they had obviously considered a range of ways they could inflict harm on Mitchell. But then to hand deliver it to your letterbox demonstrated to me, they were willing to take risks and had information about where you lived. It was on an unusual paper and it should have been checked for fingerprints and forensically checked for other information such as how or what sort of paper was used. Staff should also be made aware of the letter and the threats made in it and individually asked whether they knew anything about it, who wrote it and who delivered it. Commissioners, the community visitor's view is completely in line with that of James and Victoria's. And the submission advanced by the department that it took the letter serious or seriously or seriously enough by the state cannot be supported. It also didn't constitute a critical incident, we learned through the course of the hearing. But there can be no doubt that the Third of March Letter did constitute, as, as, as menacing as it was, a critical incident. At the time, the receipt of the letter on the third of March, two thousand and eighteen, according to the evidence of Ms Boswell, this is a transcript, line three ninety-one, line twenty, a critical incident only referred to incidents involving specific injuries to residents within D H S. It is inexplicable why a critical incident would not have included a malicious threat to the safety of a resident in D H S's care in two thousand and eighteen. This most certainly contributed to the ad hoc and lackadaisical approach that D H S took the investigation of the Third of March Letter right throughout and further undermines the department's submissions, that they dealt with the letter with the severity or gravity that it required. Commissioners, we've supported an augmented Council assisting's submissions regarding adverse finding two in paragraphs twenty-four to twenty-seven of our submissions. In relation to finding two by Council assisting, and this relates to the, um, communication breakdowns between the department and Victoria and James, the state or the department contains at paragraph thirty-four of their submissions, that there are past and ongoing communication initiatives designed to encourage general communication between the department and families. Victoria and James note that these are mostly push-style communication strategies. That is, one-way communication from the department. And in relation to the satisfaction study surveys that have been administered, Victoria and James note the absence of any strategic plans to address the deficiencies nor pick up on positive results. And there's no publication, as we understand it, of the results of those satisfaction studies at all. In fact, the experience of James and Victoria in the department's satisfaction surveys is that there's no follow-up from the department either. At paragraph forty-two of the state submissions, the state commends to the Commission the Accommodation Services Quality and Safeguarding Committee and the safeguarding framework. James and Victoria submit that as a matter of logic, no matter how many levels of bureaucracy and committees and subcommittees are implemented, and no matter what the framework, if they exist in a culture that would avoid the glaringly obvious need to identify the author of a menacing letter such as that received in March, two thousand and eighteen, the department will never enable a proper environment ensuring the safeguard for people with disability in their care. For James and Victoria, deep cultural change is required. James and Victoria fully support adverse number, adverse finding number seven as outlined by Council assisting, in that there's been no personal or institutional accountability in respect of the treatment of Mitchell. The families and the, the individual and the families have no closure on these significant impacts and their families themselves. We adopt the submissions made earlier in the day by Council assisting on this point and wish to add only one, one further point, and this is in relation to the letters of apology referred to by the department in paragraph sixty-eight point six. At paragraph one hundred and two of Council assisting submissions, Council assisting sets out a letter that put a full stop to the investigation so far as the department was concerned into the, uh, into the Three March Letter. They write to Victoria and James and the contents of that letter is set out in paragraph one hundred and two, Council assisting submissions, but it's worth having a look at in the context of an apology issued only a week or two later. They said, in this written correspondence, I wish to advise that the department has acted on the recommendations that Ombudsman and addition, and an additional eight witnesses, witness statements have been obtained. The author of the letter was not identified and I am satisfied no further inquiries can be made. I now consider this matter closed. That letter was blunt. It demonstrated no insight into the impact that the issues had on Victoria and James. And in that context, an apology sent, although it wasn't received, sent on the eleventh of March, two thousand and twenty-one, and exhibited at fourteen fifty-one, sent by the department, needs to be read in the context of that earlier correspondence. And accountability needs to be measured in light of, in the context of that correspondence. And given the fact that the department was about to have, at that time, March of two thousand and twenty-one, the spotlight turned upon, turned on upon it in relation to how it had dealt with this matter by the Royal Commission. Commissioners, the Chair asked earlier a question of Council assisting related to the recommendations. And I can indicate, Your Honour, Commissioners, I'm sorry, that there has been some developments in relation to the recommendations set out in paragraph three hundred and twenty-two of Council assisting's submissions. It, the short answer to whether there has been an implementation of those recommendations is not fully. It is a work in progress. The, um, there has been an independent investigator, um, who's been given the task of investigating the Third of March Letter, that is evident. Victoria and James have not at this stage been invited to, nor approached by the department nor in the investigation in relation to the terms of reference. They have indicated they would be more than prepared to, to assist the department in that endeavour. Um, in relation to three twenty-two C, obviously that will flow from-
So, Mr O'Brien, in what you've just said, do you mean they, Victoria and James have not been approached for the purposes of determining the content of the terms of reference? Is that what you meant?
Correct. They've been, they have been told that there will be an investigation. They have not been asked to participate at this stage in the formulation of the terms of reference. Um, the public release of the investigation report will flow down the track, no doubt. Um, but they haven't been asked about that at this stage. And relation to three twenty-two D, which relates to their wishes in respect to a genuine and meaningful apology, and in relation to the issues of redress or additional supports, there has not been any discussion with them in relation to those matters. They do, however, look forward to meaningfully consult, consulted and participated in that, in that recommendation, should the department adhere to it and implement it. Uh, Commissioners, those are the submissions on behalf of Victoria and James. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr O'Brien. I'll inquire whether my colleagues have any questions. Commissioner Bennett?
Uh, no, thank you, Chair.
And Commissioner McKeown?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr O'Brien. Thank you. Um, is it convenient now to adjourn? Can I inquire, please, as to, uh, Mr, Mr Dyson, how long you're likely to be?
Yeah, I can indicate at this stage, I don't have any oral submissions, but would be willing, obviously, to take any questions from the Commissioners to the extent that assists.
All right, thank you. And perhaps I could also ask Mr Simpson how long you anticipate you will take in your submissions?
Um, Chair, I expect that I may be thirty to forty-five minutes in my oral submissions.
All right, thank you very much. In that case, it's now twelve forty-five Eastern Standard Time. We'll adjourn until one forty-five Eastern Standard Time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Uh, yes, Miss Eastman.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. There's two matters. One, a correction to a reference that I gave you earlier. And secondly, I'm sorry that I omitted to deal with the recommendations in relation to Daniel Rogers. So Commissioners, I wrongly attributed some words to Ms Lois Boswell when I gave you the reference in relation to the reporting of Daniel Rogers' bruising. Um, I gave you a transcript reference at one six one, line fifteen to forty, and that should be Mrs Kirkby rather than Ms Boswell. And Commissioners, you might recall that I addressed the recommendations in relation to Mitchell, Victoria and James. And there was also a proposed recommendation in our Council assisting submissions in relation to Daniel Rogers. And we said there, D H S should, one, provide an apology to Daniel Rogers and his family for its failure to prevent abuse and neglect when Mr Rogers resided at End Street. And, two, discuss what redress and/or additional supports and assistance Daniel Rogers and his family require arising out of the events at End Street. In her written, uh, response, Mrs Rogers noted the recommendation and she said this- In her written response, Mrs Rogers noted the recommendation, and she said this. Shortly after the hearing in Adelaide, we, the Rogers family, received a letter of apology from Lois Boswell. The letter had the incorrect date of Daniel's injury. It was pointed out to Ms Boswell, and she acknowledged in an email that an error was made, and she did not reissue the letter. So I just wish to bring that to your attention. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Mr Dyson, I think you indicated that you did not wish to make any oral submissions in support of the Australian Government's written submissions. Is that still the position?
It is, thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. I think you also indicated that you would take any questions that Commissioners might have. So with that in mind, I shall inquire whether Commissioner Bennett has any questions she wishes to put to you as the representative of the Australian Government.
No, I don't, Chair, thank you.
Commissioner McKeown, do you have any questions you wish to put to Mr Dyson?
Yes, Chair, just one question. Mr Dyson, in your submission at paragraph forty two and forty three, you acknowledge that the conflict of interest issue is one that you will keep considering. Are you able to tell me, will the Commonwealth continue or consider the issue that can arise where a service provider may set up subsidiary companies that then provide multiple services, multiple services to the one client, such as a tenancy, support, coordination, service and support? So can you tell me if the Commonwealth is considering that as part of your consideration of the border issue?
I am aware and understand of the evidence that has been heard by the Royal Commission about that issue to date, and it has come up in relation to instructions. As to the very specific instructions on the very specific question you've asked, I can't confirm it. I would imagine it would be part of that broader discussion that is being had, but I can certainly clarify that and bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Mr Dyson, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeown. Mr Dyson, you will recall that Ms Eastman referred to some evidence that did in fact reference the use of the expression shared responsibility. That relates to paragraphs thirteen and fourteen of your written submissions. Do you accept what Ms Eastman put, namely, that this did, in fact, this concept did in fact form part of the evidence?
Yes, and it was not, unless it thought it should be a criticism as such, it was more a request for clarification to understand how that term should be understood, given the various forms that it might take and the manner in which it had been used once it's gone into detail in implementing things like recommendation three from the Robinson Report. So to that extent, yes, the question was asked and the question was answered. And to the extent that we can then later go into any further detail in any hearings the Commission might want to about how that might work in detail, as we've said in our outline, we're happy to assist.
I rather read paragraphs thirteen and fourteen as an answer to the quoted extract from council assisting submissions. The extract reads, however, the terms of the concerns raised and recommendations made in the two reports suggest that any focus on Ms Smith as a person fell between the gaps of shared responsibility. May I take it from your answer that the Australian Government is not necessarily resisting that proposition? More one of benign neutrality?
Yes, I think benign neutrality is an appropriate expression. In my add, this, it's not a qualify, but an extension of it, that the, naturally, as has been said quite properly by council assisting, the inquiry was not into the terms of the death of Anne Marie Smith itself or the circumstances of it, but the reports that came out of it and then the forward looking use of how to implement the recommendations that might fall. So to the extent there that the question is, what is shared responsibility? That is where, for example, the exchange with Mr Hoffmann becomes relevant and the collateral work that is being done by the Commonwealth Government on these issues at the same time.
All right, thank you. In the section on your submissions dealing with community visitors, I think you have, in effect, corrected what council assisting reported is quoted in paragraph eighteen of your submissions. As I understand of the thrust of what you've said is that the NDIS Commission has not in fact already taken steps to start the process of establishing an NDIS community visitor scheme, but this is something that is to commence later in two thousand and twenty one as part of a review of the NDIS framework. Is that the point of those paragraphs?
It is, and to highlight that a national community visitor scheme is not within the gift of the Commissioner, but rather the ministerial councillors, Commissioner Headwind doing his oral evidence. So that while that that letter triggered the form that it might take, it then shifts to the other departments, including DSS as to how that might look through the framework review.
Why do you say that it would not be within the province of the NDIS Commission to establish or fund a community visitor program?
Sorry, it is, but the decision as to the establishment and funding would go through the ministerial council, as I understand Commissioner Head's evidence.
Why?
I can take those instructions. It's not clear to me from the evidence, but that was the evidence given by Commissioner Head.
Right, that, thank you. I think that the submissions, and perhaps this is not an uncommon experience when submissions are put in answer to council assisting submissions, but there may be a question of language or terminology. If you go to paragraph twenty seven of your submissions, you say to the extent that the safeguarding task force report or council assisting is suggesting that the NDIA does not have a methodology to assess the potential vulnerability of participants as part of the planning process, and that it does not put supports in place according to the participant's level of vulnerability, the Australian Government does not accept this suggestion. I think it was explained by Ms Eastman that the proposition was not that there is no methodology. The proposition was that the methodology may not be adequate. Is there anything else that you wish to say in relation to the approach of the NDIA as to the adequacy of the methodology? Or are you content to leave it as it is?
No, I accept learned council assisting's clarification on that, and that then feeds into the remaining points we make in that section. I don't have anything to add.
And if we go to paragraph thirty six, where you say the NDIA is currently reviewing the support coordination model, or to consider how it could be improved to better support participant outcomes. There was, I take it from paragraph thirty six, a public request by the NDIA for submissions on this issue. Is that, is that correct? Has that been done publicly?
That has been done publicly, yes.
I see. And the position is that there will be some kind of, is it a discussion paper to be released in December two thousand and twenty one? Or is it to be a set of firm recommendations or proposals? Or is that as yet unclear?
That is as yet unclear on my instructions, but I can double check that and come back to the Commissioner.
I'm content with you recording what your instructions are for the moment. And can you please tell us what the current position is with the NDIS amendment improving support for at risk participants, Bill two thousand and twenty one? Is that still working its way through the Parliament?
I can, it is before the Senate.
Before the Senate, but has not been passed by the Senate, but has been passed by the House.
As I understand it, on the instructions, yes.
All right, well, that's something that I think we can easily enough check. All right, unless there's something else that you want to say, that's all the questions that I have. So thank you very much for your written submissions and for appearing today, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Can we now go, please, to Mr Simpson representing the State of South Australia? Yes, Mr Simpson?
Thank you, Chair. We were alerted during the break that there may be an issue with our technology. So if there are any issues on understanding us from this end, please don't hesitate to draw that to my attention.
Well, if there are IT problems, we probably won't be able to draw it to your attention, but we'll do our best.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Commissioners, the State welcomes the opportunity to supplement its written submissions of this oral hearing. I don't propose to revisit every submission that's made in the State's written submissions, but to respond to a number of points in particular that have come out of council assisting's submissions from this morning. The first point relates to the proposed adverse finding one A. And the issue that the State takes with the proposed adverse finding is really that the assertion that the State or DHS did not take the three March letter seriously enough. And the State's submissions in relation to that identify the steps that were taken that demonstrate that the State did indeed take the letter seriously. There is more to taking that letter seriously than just the investigation. We accept that the investigation into the author of the letter is an important part of the response to that letter, and the State and DHS acknowledge that that part of the response was not adequate, and steps are now being taken to attempt to remedy that. But the proposed adverse finding goes beyond the the investigation and the fact that that investigation became distracted from identifying the source of the letter. And the State's submissions respond to that submission or that proposed adverse finding that goes beyond the scope of the or the adequacy of the investigation into the author of the letter. The State otherwise.
But you are not disputing that there was a failure in the immediate response to the letter to undertake or set in train proper investigations into the author of the letter?
That's correct, Chair, and we don't resist the balance of proposed adverse finding one A. The point that we take is with the proposition that we didn't take the letter seriously enough. We accept the investigation into the author of the letter was not sufficient and not satisfactory, and steps are being taken to address that. But the point that we make is the department did take the letter seriously, and it put measures in place to address Mitchell's safety immediately following advice about the existence of that letter.
It may be a question of what label one puts on the admitted failure. It may be that it's not so much a question of whether the letter was taken seriously. It's more like what was actually done as a response to the letter. And there seems to be a degree of common ground that the response did not include something very important that should have been done.
I would agree with that assessment, Chair. In relation to proposed adverse finding one B, the State's contention is that the proposed adverse finding is unacceptably broad in its terms. Now, again, there are proposed adverse findings that deal with and address the adequacy of the investigation to identify the author of the letter. And if that's what is contemplated by adverse finding one B, then we, the State submits that adverse finding one C two, and indeed, that which is accepted in adverse finding one A, address those shortcomings in the investigation to attempt to identify the author of the letter. But the way in which adverse finding one B is framed, it is not confined to those matters which are directed at identifying the author of the letter, which is an accepted shortcoming of the response by the department to the letter.
That's not the only shortcoming, as I read your submissions, that is accepted. If you go to adverse finding one C, you do not dispute, I think, proposed finding, adverse finding one C one or one C three.
That's correct, Chair.
And I'm not quite sure what your position is on one C two. That is, the delay made it less likely that the author of the three March letter would ever be identified.
The State's position is this, effectively, we accept that the delay in the investigation to attempt to identify the author of the letter may have affected the likelihood of identifying the author, may have adversely affected the likelihood. The only point we make is that there can be no certainty that the author of the letter ever would have been identified. And that's really the only submission we make. We accept that the delay may have made it less likely that the author would have been identified.
Well, I don't think that adverse finding one C two is in absolute terms. It just says, as you're in effect read out, that the delay made it less likely that the author would ever be identified. And in a sense, that's self evident, isn't it?
Indeed, Chair, and the only point we make in response to that submission is that the Commission can't go further than what is proposed by adverse finding one C two. So that is in effect the State's submission.
All right, thank you.
In response to adverse findings one D and one E, the State accepts that that there is a reasonable prospect that the author of the letter may have been an employee of the department. But the point that we make is that council assisting submissions seem to proceed on a basis on the assumption that it's a foregone conclusion that the person necessarily was an employee of the department. The only point that we make is we don't know that. We can't be sure of that until the author of the letter is identified. But we accept that the mere fact that there is a real prospect that the person was an employee of the department at some stage means that the department had an obligation to attempt to identify the author of the letter. And we accept that, notwithstanding any request that the family may have made or otherwise, and that that wasn't undertaken with sufficient rigor in the first and second investigation. And steps are now being undertaken to attempt to address those deficiencies with the further investigation that's being undertaken.
Thank you, I understand that, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well. All right, thank you.
In relation to adverse finding two, proposed adverse finding two, in effect, the State relies on its written submissions in relation to the changes that have been made, but also in relation to how those changes look to the implementation of those policies to go beyond only structural changes, but also the implementation to have real effects to the people in the department's services.
I think that Ms Eastman's proposition in relation to proposed adverse finding two was that recognizing that there have been some steps taken, as outlined in your submissions, by the State in the form of a restructure. Nonetheless, the finding is open. What is your response to that?
We would, I accept, Chair, that the adverse finding two is open on the evidence. We would, I accept Chair that the adverse finding 2 is open on the evidence, but it's important context to understand that that adverse finding relates to policies as were in place at the time that the conduct occurred. And to recognize that changes have been made is an important part in understanding the steps that have been taken since these events occurred.
Does the evidence indicate whether the changes that occurred from April 2019 were prompted by these particular circumstances or were there changes that occurred? As far as the evidence goes, does it show that these changes were in contemplation in any event and were unrelated to the circumstances of Victoria and James' case?
As I understand the evidence that's before the commission, I don't think there is an answer to that question before the commission. I can take instructions on that point if it would assist, but I don't think-
It's not a question of instructions, it's just whether the evidence addresses it. If it does, it does, and if it doesn't, it doesn't.
My understanding is the evidence does not address it Chair.
All right, okay, thank you. Yes, keep going.
In relation to proposed adverse finding 3, the state's submissions, which are directed at the immediate response to address Mitchell's safety, addresses the proposed adverse finding insofar as it relates to the response being or rather the focus being person-centered. Those steps taken to address Mitchell's safety demonstrate a focus on the services being person-centered insofar as the question may relate to the safety and wellbeing of people in accommodation services more generally. It's accepted that, of course, if the author of this letter is a person who was or is working with vulnerable people, that's a matter that the DHS would want to identify as a matter of priority. And of course, you would not want a person who would write a letter in the terms that was sent to James and Victoria working with vulnerable people. That is, of course, the position. And DHS witnesses gave evidence to the effect that it was heartbreaking to imagine someone writing a letter in those terms, working in DHS services. And of course, the commission has received evidence about the DHS's acceptance that the investigations to attempt to identify that author to attempt to identify the author of the letter were not sufficient and that further steps are being taken to attempt to identify the author. But if we're looking at safety and wellbeing of people in accommodation services more generally, there are a range of measures that haven't been the subject of evidence in the commission involving working with vulnerable people checks that the department implements and supervision of people working in accommodation services and reporting of incidents. Now, in my submission, those matters are all relevant to the question of the safety and wellbeing of people in accommodation services.
So did you say these measures have not been the subject of evidence?
At public hearing 14, no, they've not been.
But you want to tell us about them anyway?
No Chair, I don't. But what I'm suggesting is that the proposed adverse finding 3 goes beyond what is sustainable based on the evidence that's been presented at public hearing 14.
It's really the same point over again, isn't it? You accept that there was a failure to do something that should have been done that was very important both to the health and safety of Mitchell, but also to the health and safety potentially of other residents in accommodation that was provided by the department. So if the adverse finding is 3 is focused upon that failure and its consequences for the safety and wellbeing of people in accommodation services, I assume you wouldn't resist it.
That's correct Chair. The submission that the state makes is simply that the proposed adverse finding is broader than is what is sustainable on the evidence.
And what about the proposed finding that the case study highlights a failure to be person-centered in relation to Mitchell himself? There are really a couple of propositions caught up in proposed finding 3, I would think.
Yes, and the submissions that address the steps that were taken to address Mitchell's safety, in my submission, address that asserted failure to be person-centered. In my submission, the steps that were taken by the department demonstrate an emphasis on being person-centered in Mitchell and his safety and the steps that were implemented specifically in relation to him, while accepting that the investigation was deficient. In my submission, that part of the proposed adverse finding is not available and should not be made.
I follow that, thank you.
It may be convenient to address at this point the proposed additional adverse findings put forward by James and Victoria. The first of those Chair relates to the the direction, well, what's described as a direction not to investigate the author of the letter. What is in evidence before the commission is an audit report that was prepared in June 2021 that contains reference to a diary entry prepared by the investigator who conducted the second investigation. And there's reference there to that second investigator's understanding of a direction that was given to the first investigator. So the evidence before the commission is not entirely clear about the context in which that asserted direction may have been given.
But it's consistent with the rest of the evidence, isn't it? It's not disputed that there was no investigation of that issue. Now, there may be a question as to whether that was because things that James is alleged to have said or otherwise, and that's perhaps a separate factual question upon which there may be some differences. But it would hardly be surprising, would it, for there to be such a direction since that's what happened?
With respect Chair, my understanding of the evidence, and this is in the state's submissions, is that the first and second investigation did attempt to identify the author of the letter. Those attempts were not sufficient and not adequate, but there were attempts made to attempt to identify the author of the letter in each of those investigations. Notwithstanding this suggestion that there was a direction not to do so, it was in fact the case that attempts were made, witnesses were spoken to, to attempt to identify the author of the letter. Those investigations were not sufficiently thorough, but attempts were made. And in that context and in circumstances where neither investigator neither the author of that diary note that's referred to in exhibit 14-105, nor the original investigator gave evidence at the commission and in circumstances where attempts were made to attempt to identify the author of the letter. In my submission, the proposed additional adverse finding should not be made.
I'm looking at paragraph 74 of council assisting submissions, which states that the IMU did not commence its investigation on 20 April 2018, some six weeks after the letter was received. And it goes on to comment on the failure to institute a formal inquiry. If there were a diary note or diary entry, it appears on the basis of the evidence that is set out in Mr O'Brien's submissions that the diary entry would have been made at some point in April 2019, 2018, I'm sorry. That might suggest that it was a diary entry directed, if not to the question of whether any inquiry would be made at all, but whether any inquiry beyond the speaking to some staff members, which in fact would place over a period of six months, as indicated in paragraph 76 of council assisting submission. So it perhaps does fit. I understand the point you're making that there were some inquiries made, but it may go to explain the nature of those inquiries and the limitations on them.
My understanding is that the diary note that's referred to in the evidence is dated in 2021 in the context of the second investigation that was undertaken. We don't know the date of any direction that may have been given in relation to the first investigation is my understanding of the evidence. And so we just don't know if a direction to that effect was given, when it was given and to what it was directed.
All right, well, it may be that I've misunderstood that evidence. I'll need to go back to the primary evidence. I had rather understood this to be a reference in 2021 to something that happened in 2018. But if that's not the case, then it's not the case.
I think Chair, you're correct in that, but we don't know when in 2018 is my understanding of the evidence.
I see. All right, okay, thank you.
In relation to the additional adverse finding 2 that relates to the assertion that the department blames James for the failure to properly investigate the author of the letter. In the department's submission, the department does not blame James for the failure to adequately investigate the author of the letter. The department accepts that it had an obligation to undertake that investigation irrespective of anything that James may or may not have said. The only point that the department makes in relation to its understanding of James's wishes is that it provides context to the focus of the investigation and the decisions of the individuals involved in directing those investigations. It's not directed at blaming James for those shortcomings in the investigation. The department accepts that it had an obligation to undertake those investigations irrespective of anything that James may or may not have said.
So to that extent, any dispute as to what was said or what understanding might have been derived from what was said is not really relevant as the way you put it.
That's correct Chair. Now, in relation to the proposed recommendations in relation to Mitchell's case study, Annexure 1 to the state's submissions outlines some steps that have been taken. Mr O'Brien has indicated his understanding of certain matters. Now, there's only one additional point that I really wanted to make there. And I'm reluctant to go into questions of evidence in these submissions. But on my instructions, a letter was sent by the Minister for Human Services for the state of South Australia to James and Victoria on the 18th of June in 2021. And that letter indicated that the minister has asked the CEO of DHS to initiate a supplementary independent investigation and that the minister had asked that James and Victoria be consulted and interviewed as part of this process if they choose. Now, that letter was sent well prior to council assisting's submissions and the proposed recommendations.
Sorry, this is paragraph four of Annexure A you're referring to.
That's correct Chair. That letter doesn't refer to terms of reference explicitly because this letter was written well before council assisting's submissions and proposed recommendations that referred to terms of reference. But the reference to James and Victoria being invited to be consulted in relation to the investigation on my instructions is an invitation to effectively provide some input into the scope of the investigation.
The letter is not in evidence, is it?
No Chair, that's correct. It was-
I'm not quite sure why we're having a discussion about something that postdated the hearing in respect of a letter that is not in evidence.
It simply goes to the submissions that have been made by Mr O'Brien about the response to the proposed recommendations. We've heard what Mr O'Brien has said in terms of James and Victoria's willingness to be consulted as to the scope of that investigation. And so I have no doubt that that process will occur. But it was simply a matter to respond to the submissions that came from Mr O'Brien on behalf of James and Victoria.
Thank you.
Turning then to Daniel Rogers' case study and proposed adverse finding 4. The terms of proposed adverse finding 4 are directed at the question of the adequacy of an investigation by the department. Adverse finding 4A talks about the investigation. Or in fact, A, B and C each refer to investigations. That is the reason that the state has made submissions, that the question of an investigation into the cause of Mr Rogers' injuries was not the subject of direct evidence at the hearing. What was the subject of evidence was the adequacy of the reporting of the injuries. Now, if the proposed adverse finding were directed at the adequacy of the reporting, well, that would be a different matter and the state's position would be somewhat different. But what's been put forward is an adverse finding that relates to an investigation that wasn't the subject of evidence at the hearing. And that's the reason that the state contends that the proposed adverse findings are not available on the evidence.
Are you contending that the evidence demonstrates that the department did immediately investigate the cause of bruising identified on 22 February 2019?
Chair, I'm not.
So why then are you disputing adverse finding 4 or proposed adverse finding 4A?
Because the question of whether or not the department immediately investigated the cause of the injury was not the subject of evidence at public hearing 14. What was the subject of- Sorry Chair.
Sorry, go on.
What was the subject of evidence was the way in which that injury and observations of that injury were reported on the Riscman reporting system and whether or not those incident reports that were entered on the system accurately reflected what the policies dictate should have been highlighted in those reports. Now, the state accepts and the witnesses that gave evidence at the public hearing accept that the reporting of those incidents and those injuries was inadequate. But what was not the subject of evidence was the question of investigations directed at identifying the source of the injuries.
If the reporting is inadequate, that would- If the reporting is inadequate, that would support an inference, would it not, that there was no immediate investigation? And perhaps a lot turns on the word immediate or immediately. But if the records understate, if that is the position, understate the extent of the bruising or its possible seriousness, it rather supports such an inference, doesn't it? You don't have...
Well...
How do you prove the negative?
What the evidence demonstrates is that shortly after, excuse me, shortly after Mr Rogers' admission to hospital, DHS takes steps to encourage that the incident be reported to police, and that then a police investigation is undertaken in relation to the injuries. And that's the point at which the police process took its course. So in the state's submission, it was appropriate for that police process to be undertaken prior to any investigation by the department into the cause of those injuries. But the point is this, that wasn't the subject of evidence at the public hearing. The public hearing looked at the reporting and the adequacy of the reporting. It didn't look at that next step.
What was the date of the referral to the police? Your paragraph forty-six suggests it was the twenty-sixth of February. Presumably on the Tuesday following the admission to hospital on the twenty-second.
I'm sorry, Chair, I missed that last comment.
I'm sorry. Your paragraph forty-six suggests that Mr Cunningham recommended that Mrs Rogers report the incident to the police, and that recommendation was made on the twenty-sixth of February. That tells us, if that is correct, when Mr Cunningham recommended it to Mrs Rogers. It doesn't tell us when it was actually referred to the police, but is, am I correct in thinking, and I may not have appreciated all the evidence at this stage, but am I correct in thinking that this was the mechanism by which the matter came to the attention of the police?
My understanding is that, yes, that is the mechanism by which the matter came to the attention of police.
So it's a recommendation made by Mr Cunningham to Mrs Rogers?
That's right, and my understanding is that both Miss Rogers' evidence and Mr Cunningham's evidence is that they attended a police station together, if my memory serves, to make that report to police either on the twenty-sixth or shortly thereafter.
I see. All right. So you say that that process is inconsistent with the proposed adverse finding four A because four days after Daniel was admitted to hospital, the recommendation was made to Mrs Rogers that she make a complaint to the police.
Yes, Chair, my submission, that's correct.
All right, I follow that. What do you want to say about proposed findings four B and four C?
In effect, Chair, it's the same, it's the same point in relation to the question of investigations. It's accepted that the department did not seek expert medical opinion as to the likely or possible timing or cause of the bruising. However, SA Police did undertake that as part of their investigation. And again, in my submission, the question of investigation I've dealt with in the written submissions and in what I've said this afternoon. There's reference, Chair, in the state's written submissions to a summary report that's referred to in paragraph fifty-one. That is, in effect, a summary of the investigation that was undertaken by SA Police. If contrary to my submissions, Chair, the commission is intending to consider the question of the adequacy or otherwise of any investigation undertaken by DHS into the cause of the injuries to Daniel Rogers, then in my submission, the state should have leave to seek to tender that summary report provided by SA Police. It's not presently in evidence before the commission. And the reason the state hadn't raised this previously is that we hadn't understood that the adequacy of any investigation undertaken by the department was going to be the subject of proposed adverse findings, as it hadn't been the subject of evidence at the public hearing. I raise that, Chair, because I'm not seeking to tender that document unless the commission does intend to examine the adequacy of any investigation.
Well, the commission will certainly be considering the submissions that have been made by council assisting, and since council assisting has made the submission, that potential, sorry, possible adverse finding four should be made, well, then clearly we're obliged to consider that submission and determine whether the evidence supports it.
Well, then, in those circumstances, Chair, I seek leave to tender this summary report that's referred to in paragraph fifty-one of the state's submissions. Maybe that's a matter that is dealt with subsequent to today, because that document did not appear in the hearing bundles for public hearing fourteen, and so the interest parties or the parties with leave to appear may not necessarily have seen that document before. But in my submission, that is relevant to the commission's consideration of that question.
As I understand the relevant chronology, the hearing takes place in early June. Then there is a direction or invitation, however you want to put it, whereby South Australia and other parties was to identify by the second of July any documents that they wished to be tendered. You didn't identify the police report at that time, but you say that was because at that time you did not have the submissions by council assisting, which were prepared on or served on the sixth of August. Is that the chronology?
That's correct, Chair. And to add to that, the question of the adequacy of any investigation undertaken by the department wasn't the subject of evidence in my submission at the public hearing. So it wasn't in our contemplation that it would be the subject of proposed adverse findings, such that we would need to tender documents relevant to that topic.
What then is the relevance of the report? I think each commissioner does have a copy of that document because your submissions indicated that it was relevant. It was not part of the tender bundle, and it was not included in any additional documents that you sought to tender by the second of July. But I understand the basis upon which you now tender, but what is the relevance of the police investigation?
The relevance is that the, after the matter was reported to police in February two thousand and nineteen, the police undertook an investigation into the possible cause of the injury. That involved speaking to witnesses, seeking expert medical opinion about the possible cause of the bruising, and came to their views about what conclusions could be drawn based on the evidence that was derived from their investigation.
But does the document take it any further than one would expect? Namely, there was a reference to or referral to the police, and the police conducted an investigation. Does it really matter what the police actually did? We can assume that the police did their job.
That's correct, Chair. But then that investigation file was provided to the department, for the department to then consider as part of its own internal investigation. And so the question of whether or not the department conducted a sufficient investigation is based on the materials that were compiled by SA Police. And so the state's contention that the department undertook an appropriate investigation, making appropriate use of the earlier investigation that had been conducted by SA Police, is based on that investigation that was undertaken by SA Police. And that's the contention that's advanced in paragraph forty-four of the state's submissions.
When do you say that the department got the summary report? I think it's called a detail, the current report.
I don't have the date that the report was provided to the department to hand, but my understanding is it was around mid-two thousand, shortly prior to Mr Dodds...
It could have been around mid-two thousand. Might have been around mid-two thousand and twenty, possibly.
Oh, sorry, two thousand and twenty. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, the document actually has a date of the seventh of December two thousand and twenty. I'm just not quite sure what this, how this advances the argument in the sense that the matter was referred, there's no, to the police, there appears to be no contest about when that happened. The police then conduct an investigation and reach certain conclusions. But anyway, let me hear what Ms Eastman has to say about the tender.
Thank you, Chair. It's relevant in addition to the question of proposed adverse finding four B, that the department didn't seek expert medical opinion as to the likely possible timing or cause of the bruising, where the reason the department didn't do that is that it already had SA Police's investigation that addressed that question of expert evidence.
Well, that would depend upon when they got the police report.
Chair, this picks up paragraph one hundred and forty-eight to one hundred and fifty of the council assisting submissions. The investigation by DHS was always a core and relevant issue in this hearing. For this reason, it was Mrs Rogers' uncontested evidence that she was told by DHS that it would investigate. That's a very different thing to being asked by Mr Cunningham, who's part of DHS, for Mrs Rogers to report to the police. The issue in relation to what Mrs Rogers was told and her belief that DHS would investigate the complaint is that she acted on that belief and continued to act on that belief for up to a year. And again, her uncontested evidence was that she heard nothing about the investigation. Neither she or Daniel were involved. And about a year later, she had the meeting with Mr Dodd, and I think Ms Boswell may have been present, where she was told that DHS's investigation, that was her evidence, was inconclusive. It is surprising that the state would say that its investigation was the South Australian Police investigation. It was Mrs Rogers who reported the matter to the police. The issue is that there is no account for what DHS did, although we're now told that DHS had the benefit of the police material and relied on the police investigation to perhaps advise Mrs Rogers that the investigation was inconclusive. You recall, Mrs Rogers said she wasn't given a copy of that report, and she was told that she had to obtain it through Freedom of Information.
When you say that report, do you mean the police report or the DHS report?
The issue here is that Mrs Rogers' evidence, and it's repeated in her submission this morning, is that she trusted DHS to conduct an investigation. It didn't occur. And the submission, as I understand my line of friends making, is that what the police did was what DHS then took and considered as part of its investigation. So we do press that point, and we do think the submission is open and the finding is open. Whether or not the police obtained a medical report is a matter relevant to the police. But there's nothing to indicate that DHS itself sought to obtain relevant advice from a medical practitioner as to the cause of the bruising at the time that it occurred. That's the nature of our submission, and I oppose the tender of the material. Mrs Rogers has not had a chance to review that or look at that, and in circumstances where she hasn't been represented, it would be unfair that commissioners you receive that material into evidence because it's referred to in a submission.
Mr Simpson, I think the fundamental difficulty with the tender is that it only supports the propositions you wish to put. If there is additional evidence, that is to say, what was the relationship between the department's investigation or its intention to conduct an investigation and the police investigation? To what extent did the department rely upon the police investigation? What were they told? This would require a whole further set of inquiries that we're not in a position to undertake. So for that reason, I would not be inclined to accept the tender of the particular document, unless there's something else you want to say. I'm perfectly prepared to consider if there's something that answers that point.
Chair, only that if that's the position in my submission, the proposed adverse finding isn't available on the evidence before the commission.
Yeah, now, I understand that finding, but if there's nothing further to be said, I reject the tender. Thank you.
Chair, can I just advise that I've just been asked to tell you that Mrs Rogers' recollection was that Mr Cunningham did not attend the police station with her. Mr Cunningham encouraged her to report to the police, and she attended the police by herself.
Well, we'll have to see what the evidence of the hearing was on that. Thank you. Yes, all right. Please continue, Mr Simpson.
Thank you, Chair.
Have we dealt with the proposed adverse finding four?
Yes, Chair, I believe we have. Saving except for this submission, and I believe this is made in our written submissions, but I'll just make it again in case it's not. The department's policy dictates that if a family member or a client is not willing or able to report a matter to SA Police, then the department will do that subsequently. And that appears in paragraph forty-eight of Mr Dodds' affidavit. That appears as exhibit fourteen dash one oh nine. Now, in response to proposed adverse findings five and six, the state accepts that the underlying facts that we're discussing that have been the subject of evidence at the public hearing are not in dispute. Council assisting has made reference to the evidence that was given by the witnesses to the department, that the treatment of Daniel Rogers and Mitchell was unacceptable and substandard, and that is accepted, and the state and the department accepts that. The question that the proposed adverse finding invites is unavoidably legalist... the proposed adverse finding invites is unavoidably legalistic because council assisting is inviting a finding that inviting a finding of a legal conclusion as to whether or not those facts meet the threshold that's described in the Royal Commission's definition of neglect.
Why is that a legal conclusion? The factual conclusion, isn't it?
Well, the 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 facts, the facts are not in in dispute here, Chair, the state accepts what occurred.
I I understand that, but you've there are facts and facts, there are primary facts and there are inferences that you draw from primary facts as to how you characterize them. And that's a different kind of fact, it's this, we're not applying a statute here, we're applying a definition employed by the Royal Commission to explain the concept of neglect. It may or may not be a comprehensive definition, but the question of whether the non-uncontested primary facts fit the definition is just a question of judgment as to a matter of fact, isn't it?
I I accept that, Chair, I accept that, but it is a matter of looking to.
Sorry, what we've got essentially is a different characterization of the same factual substratum.
That's that's correct, Chair. And and in effect, that that is that is the the issue that the state's submissions are directed at. And the state and the department accepts that what occurred for Daniel and for Mitchell was was unacceptable and it was substandard and that it's a treatment that people with disabilities should not be subjected to. And the consequences for Mitchell and Daniel and their families are are very real. And we don't shy away from the fact that the department strives to do better than than what we're what was the subject of evidence at at the public hearing.
Just pretty good description of neglect, isn't it?
Well, Chair, the the definition of neglect that the commission has put forward describes an absence of basic necessities of life, such as food, drink, shelter and other matters. And and while this treatment is unacceptable in our submission, this does not meet that particular definition.
I think it starts off with the words neglect includes.
Yes, yes, Chair, but the general has to be limited by the specific. And we've got specific types of conduct that are described in the definition. And 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 that's that's the extent of the state's submission on that topic.
Right, thank you. I think if you're coming to adverse finding seven, Ms. Eastman, I think, accepted the proposition that that should be understood to mean there has been no adequate personal or institutional accountability. And Ms. Eastman then explained what further what she meant by that concept.
Yes, Chair, and I'm I'm grateful for for your chair's observation on that account. And I think in those, an adverse finding in those terms, the state would accept that there has not been adequate accountability. The state's submissions address the extent to which there has been accountability. And and the state relies on its written submissions in that regard. And in fact, in in respect of adverse finding eight, the state simply relies on its on its written submissions.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. I'll just inquire whether the my colleagues have any questions. Commissioner Bennett, do you have any questions you wish to put to Mr. Simpson?
No, I think you've covered the field, Chair.
I'll take that as a compliment. Commissioner McEwan, do you have a question?
Yes, Chair, I have one question. Mr. Simpson, can I take you to paragraph forty of your written submission? And your first sentence begins by saying the mandatory induction and training programs within DHS are successfully achieving cultural change. And I won't read the rest of it. Can you tell me how will the department or how is the department measuring success?
Commissioner, I may have to take that on on notice. I don't have the instructions specifically on on what parameters are being measured. So perhaps if if I can take that on notice, I'll provide a response to the commission in due course.
Thank you, love, we'd appreciate that. Thank you, Chair.
Let's make due course within seven days.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Eastman, is there anything you wish to say in reply to any of the submissions of either South Australia or the Australian Government?
No, nothing specifically other than to thank my colleagues and the representatives of the parties with leave for preparing their submissions and cooperating with our timetables. We're grateful for their cooperation and I also thank Mrs. Rogers who prepared the written account and also her comments today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I too wish to thank council assisting, of course, but also the parties' representatives for their written submissions and for the oral submissions that have been made today. They are very helpful to the Royal Commission and we appreciate the assistance we have received. And also, we express our appreciation to Mrs. Rogers for participating in the hearing and presenting her submissions today. If there's nothing further, then we'll adjourn and I'm not at all sure when our next hearing is. But anyway, you'll no doubt. And that's the there will be there will be a hearing on the thirteenth of October. Ms. Eastman informs me dealing with issues concerning women and girls with disability and abuse, neglect or exploitation of that cohort. Thank you very much, Willa June.
The Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglects and exploitation of people with disability is adjourned.